For the, our meeting today, special, uh, board meeting. And I just want to thank everyone for being here today and be part of our meetings. And those, for those that are listening on, thank you so much. And we will go ahead and start this meeting. It's now 10:00 AM. Call to orders, 10:00 AM and roll call.
Manager, can we start with a, with a happy birthday?
Oh.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Heronimo. Happy birthday to.
When her voice is really warmed up.
Okay, um, we do for one, we do for all. So I expect everybody to sing to me on July 4th. Okay, but right now I'm going to go do the roll call. District one.
Yes, district one is here. Patrice Horstman for district one. And also want to say happy Earth Day as well as happy birthday. Uh, and pleased that the world is celebrating itself. Uh, and, uh, I'm sorry we missed the Earth Day celebrations on Saturday because of weather, but we'll celebrate today. So, thank you and thank you, everybody, for being here.
District two.
Good morning, everyone. Heronimo Vazquez, district two. And thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
District three.
Good morning, everyone. Tammy Ontiveros, district three.
Um, district four, thank you for being here and looking forward to this long day meeting. So, thank you for being here again. Uh, district five has, will not be in attendance today. It's the supervisor Fowler. So with that, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. At this time, we'll be going and doing the call to the public. We will now call, have call to the public allow, to allow any comments from the public. Please note that issues presented during the call to the public that are not on the agenda cannot be acted upon by the board members. For items not on the agenda, individual supervisors may ask questions of the public but are prohibited by open meeting law from discussing or considering the item. Only the speaker who has been called upon is authorized to speak. To encourage and respect each, uh, expression of all views, we ask that there are no disruptions. Individuals are limited to three minutes for their comments. Kirk Daly will explain how the public can provide comment at this time.
Thank you, Chair Begay. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to provide a comment, we have comment cards on the table by the door and we don't have very many people here in the room. So you can also make your way up to the podium. If you've joined us virtually, um, by Zoom, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. And if you've joined by telephone, you can hit the star nine on your phone and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. And at this time, Chair Begay, we do not have any comment cards and no hands raised on the virtual format.
We'll add 30 seconds to that.
Okay. And there are no hands raised, Chair Begay.
Thank you, Lindsay. Um, we also have, uh, proclamations, two of them. The first one is consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating May as Military Appreciation Month in Coconino County and acknowledge the 13th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down observed Thursday, May 15th, 2025. County manager.
Chair Begay, members of the board, we're pleased to have Arizona State Veterans Home Administrator Cameron Farr here with us today to read the proclamation.
Oh, you're good. Even better, okay, oh goodness, alright. Good morning, Chair Begay, uh, supervisors. My name's Cameron Farr and I'm the administrator at the Arizona Department of Veteran Services, uh, Flagstaff Veterans Home. Our home is a state of Arizona ran 80-bed skilled facility, um, providing 24-hour care to our military veterans who are experiencing 70% or more, uh, service-connected disability and a need for 24-hour skilled nursing care. Chair Begay and supervisors, we are open for admissions. And if I may take a moment to address any military veterans joining us virtually, our facility has a Veterans Benefits Counselor who can help with your service connection, filing claims and answering any questions that you might have about navigating the VA system. Um, if you need any assistance, we have some information that we've left on the table, but also there's a phone number, it's 928-637-0600. Uh, Chair Begay and supervisors, I also have forwarded our facility admissions information to your district directors and should they encounter any constituents who would benefit from our services. Um, I had the privilege of serving in Afghanistan with United States Marines right out of high school and I now have the privilege of serving veterans as an assistant deputy director with the Arizona Department of Veteran Services. Uh, my facility up on McMillan Mesa looks after veterans who again require that 24-hour care and as a result, that 24-hour care from disabilities or injuries as a result of their service. Today, I'm proud to read, um, the Military Appreciation Month proclamation and the 13th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High County Stand Down proclamation. So I'm going to go ahead and start with that or continue with that. Designating May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month, um, in Coconino County and acknowledge the 13th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down observed on Thursday, May 15th, 2025. Whereas, May is National Military Appreciation Month and whereas 365 days a year, seven days a week and 24 hours a day, members of the United States military are on call around the world defending the interests and security of the nation. And whereas, we honor and pay tribute to contribute to current and former members of the United States Armed Forces and to those who have sacrificed so much for our freedom, including, including those who have died in the pursuit of freedom. And whereas, we want to express our gratitude to the members of the United States military and their families for all that they do every day and observe the month in a symbol of unity. And whereas, the 13th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down will be observed on Thursday, May 15th, 2025, at the Arizona State Veterans Home in Flagstaff, Arizona. And whereas, Coconino County has supported this endeavor and community project since its founding in 2012 and is sincerely concerned for the general welfare and overall well-being of all veterans and their families. And whereas, the county, High Counties, sorry, High Country Stand Down provides information, assistance and outreach regarding essential community services which are available for all veterans throughout northern Arizona. And whereas, Coconino County also provides a veterans court to help veterans resolve their legal obligations and be in good standing within the community. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month in Coconino County and acknowledge the efforts of the High Country Stand Down and call upon its citizens to respectfully honor those who have served their country. Signed hopefully by board supervisors. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Farr, for reading proclamation. It means a lot, you know, for, especially on veterans, for veteran services. And so I just wanted to ask at this time, are there any activities that you have planned other than what you read off?
Gotcha. So we, we do have, uh, aside from the, the May 15th stand down, our veterans regularly attend community activities. There was a powwow that happened this last weekend that some of our veterans were able to attend. And so as far as upcoming activities of the caliber of the May 15th, nothing in the books, but we're working with several different groups within the community to have, um, events there at the facility that are open to veterans.
Thank you. At this time, I will go ahead and ask the board if they wish to make comments. District three.
Thank you, Chair Begay. I just want you to know that I have been a lifelong steadfast supporter of our military. And God bless you for the work that you do.
Thank you, supervisor.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Ontiveros, I said district three. I'm sorry. Supervisor Vazquez.
Yes, thank you for bringing this proclamation and, uh, for hosting the stand down. It's so important for our veterans to show them the different resources. Sometimes all it takes is just making that one connection to make a huge difference in a veteran's life. And so thank you for being here and spreading that information. Look forward to attending the stand down and, and meeting with our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you. Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, and thank you for being here. And, uh, it was a long time coming for the Arizona State Veterans, uh, home up here in Flagstaff. And so, so pleased that it's there. So pleased for all of your hard work and your staff's hard work. Uh, and it is, uh, absolutely something that is deserved and owed to our veterans here. So I'm so glad we're able to deliver, uh, and follow through on, on, on our, quite frankly, promise to our veterans who gave it all for us. So, uh, really appreciate it, appreciate you being here. You know, we, uh, we love going to the stand down. First of all, love being out there, meeting so many people, learning so much. Uh, unfortunately, the May 15th date is in conflict with our budget. I hope we can sneak away. Don't, don't tell our county manager, but hopefully we can sneak away and, and, and try to, you know, partake in some of it because it's so important. And again, thank you for your service. Thank you for the service that you continue to provide for our community.
Thank you, supervisor.
Also like to say, add on to my small comment I made earlier. I think they're the reason why we're here. Um, for instance, uh, co-talkers, you know, I, I think that we owe a lot to them and that anything we can do to help them, I think it's very important that we, um, are there for them too, because they were there for us when we needed them. So thank you so much for reading your proclamation. Are there any other questions, comments by the board?
No, but I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah. They have a motion to approve a proclamation designating May as Military Appreciation Month in, uh, Coconino County and acknowledge the 13th Annual Lance Davidson Memorial High Country Stand Down observed on Thursday, May 15th, 2025.
Chair Begay, I so move.
Okay, Supervisor Ontiveros.
Second.
And second by Supervisor Vazquez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Chair Begay, thank you, supervisors, thank you.
Yeah, we'll do a pick. Okay, next proclamation. Consideration and possible action approved, we already did, oh yeah, considering, uh, possible action to approve a proclamation designating May 11th through the 17th as Economic Development Week. Uh, deputy county manager.
Thank you, Chair Begay, members of the board. So our very own Economic Development Director, John Salt and Stall, is here to read the proclamation for Economic Development Week. Thanks, John.
It is now. Good morning, Chair Begay, supervisors. John Salt and Stall, Economic Development Director with Coconino County, to read this proclamation about Economic Development Week. Whereas, Coconino County respects and celebrates the land of endless beauty, home to many cultures. And whereas, Coconino County recognizes that economic development generates, enhances and communicates the value of the people, their homes, their neighborhoods and their communities. And whereas, Coconino County recognizes that economic development professionals serve as stewards, leaders and facilitators, building connections and collaborations that promote job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements and an opportun, optimistic future. And whereas, Economic Development Week provides economic development professionals a platform to showcase to their community the contributions made to the local economy throughout the year. And whereas, economic development professionals rely upon and support area partners as critical team members with whom support, trust, productivity and integrity are fostered every day. And whereas, successful economic development is always the result of a cycle of hope, reflection, assurance, the thinking, to planning, to life, living, implementation and back to hope and reflection. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Coconino County Board of Supervisors do hereby, is this for me to read as well? Seems, yeah. I just kept going. Uh, proclaim the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025 as Economic Development Week and remind individuals of the importance of this community's celebration which supports expanding opportunities, bettering lives and moving society forward.
Thank you, Mr. Salt and Stall. Is there any events, activities that you know of that might be happening?
I know that our area partners are still working on events. Uh, I think the city of Flagstaff, uh, Winslow, um, and hopefully Page as well, but those are to be determined still.
Perhaps you can put it on, online or something web, you know, just to make sure that, you know, our people out there, um, have access to those activities.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any comments by the board? Supervisor Horstman.
Thank you for reading that. And, you know, I think it's really important, uh, that we do what we can here for our local community to have a strong and vibrant economy. Uh, you know, it's, it's obviously the key to our families to be able to have a, a good life, uh, for them to be able to stay here in the first place. And, and I think with this, I'd also like to recognize the very strong tourist and outdoor recreation economy we have here. And in these times where that appears to be under attack and threatened, I think it's even more important that we take a look at, um, you know, what we are as a community, what we stand for as a community and, and really, uh, you know, what, what makes us and allows us to thrive as a community. So, thank you for reading that and, uh, uh, you know, I'm, I'm look forward to, uh, working together with you and others to really, uh, um, add to and extend our wonderful outdoor recreation and tourist economy. So thank you.
Supervisor Vazquez.
Yes, thank you for reading the, the proclamation. It's so important that we recognize how important economic development is for our communities in Coconino County. And as we move forward and kind of weathering the storm, we need to find ways that we can be sustainable so that whatever we're bringing and developing in our counties can be sustained and not just expand and contract, because that's when it hurts people. And so, uh, just really appreciate the opportunity for us to talk about workforce development, talk about economic development, talk about all the different things that drive, that are our primary economic driver in this county so that we can continue to thrive and be sustainable. Thank you.
Supervisor Ontiveros.
Um, thank you for reading this proclamation. And you and I have had many conversations and you know what a supporter I am of economic development throughout this county. So thank you for the work that you do and I very much look forward to working with you, anything that I can do to help develop further economic opportunities in the county. You know, I'm on board to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that, uh, we have many cultures here, a lot of, um, DEI, um, activities. And so I'm just thankful that, you know, very fortunate, you know, that we can better, um, look, look at everyone and mold and actually sustain our economic, uh, economic development in the future and, you know, with what we have right now. So I just agree with all my colleagues here, you know, other comments that they were made. So thank you so much for reading your proclamation.
With, with that?
That motion. I always love pictures. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve a proclamation designating May 7th to 11th through the 17th, 2025 as Economic Development Week?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Horstman.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Vazquez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now we're going to do the pick. We're now at the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by a single motion. Are there any items that the board members want to consider separately?
Yes. Sorry. Uh, could we please remove item number six? Nine? Thirteen, fourteen? And fifteen?
Are there any other board members that wish to pull any items? So is there a motion?
Chair Begay, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items number three through sixteen excluding items six, nine, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Ontiveros, second by Supervisor Horstman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Back to item number six. Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, I, first and foremost, um, I don't know if Valerie Kelly is here, uh, online or not. Um, but, uh, I think that it is really, this is to approve a recommendation from the Coconino County Workforce Development Board to reappoint Valerie Kelly, Supervisor Division of Employment and Rehabilitation Services Vocational Rehabilitation for a term, April 22nd, 2025 through April 22nd, 2027. And, you know, uh, first and foremost, I want to thank Valerie for again stepping forward, uh, to taking on this important role. Um, it is, uh, we just had an Economic Development, um, Week Proclamation. And certainly it is totally appropriate that, uh, we acknowledge and thank her for her reappointment. And I see Billy Francis is online and so I'm going to turn this over to Billy for some words and then I'd be happy to make a motion.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you so much, uh, supervisor. We're excited to have Valerie Kelly, uh, on our board and wanting to continue to, uh, to do the work that we're doing at the Coconino County Workforce Development Board. Valerie serves as a very important part of our team as she represents our individuals that have disability and challenges to employers. So as we, we continue to identify opportunities for those individuals So, as we, we continue to identify opportunities for those individuals in our community, we're, we're excited to have her voice and her passion behind that. So, thank you so much for recognizing her importance. Thank you so much for recognizing the importance of the Coquenino County Workforce Development Board. And we appreciate all your support and everything that you do to assist us to serve our community and our employers. So, thank you so much Supervisor.
Thanks, Billy.
Any other comments by board members?
At this point, I'd make a motion to approve and reappoint Valerie Kelly for the Workforce Development Board.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Supervisor Horstman, second by Supervisor Antoferos. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you.
Number nine?
Thank you, Billy.
Item number nine?
If I may, Madam Chair. For the same reason, number nine is to approve the appointment of Brooke White Thorne to represent Senator, or Supervisor Fowler in District Five on the Community Action Advisory Board for a two-year per term, to expire on April 22, 2027. And I'm not sure if Brooke White Thorne, it looks like she is here. And I'm gonna turn it over to her. But before I do that, I'd like to thank her for her willingness to serve her community and to serve us here in Coquenino County. We rely so strongly on our community members to assist us on the board, to make sure that we hear from all parts of our community, and that quite frankly, we're serving all parts of our community. So, thank you for your service. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn this to you.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman. Ms. White Thorne, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Yeah, Dave, been a good morning, everyone. It is an honor to be welcomed as a member of the Community Action Advisory Board. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Supervisor Fowler for the selection to represent her district. Her trust and confidence in me means a great deal to me. Throughout my career, I focused on building strong community partnerships, addressing health disparities, and ensuring that vital services reach those who need them most. I look forward to bringing this experience to the cab as we work together to strengthen resources and improve outcomes for underserved and at-risk populations across our region. I'm excited to collaborate with the board and community members and other partners to help reduce poverty and promote long-term sustainable change. I look forward to listening, learning, and contributing to solutions that uplift and support our most vulnerable populations. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm truly honored to serve.
Thank you. Any other board wish to make a comment? Supervisor Vasquez?
Yeah, and I would actually like to say to you, but also to the previous group as well, is just thank you for serving as volunteers like you that allow us to have these different commissions and different groups. And so, we need volunteers. So, thank you for serving in this capacity.
Supervisor Antoferos?
Thank you, Mrs. White, or Ms. White Thorne. I also would like to thank you for your service to Coquenino County.
Although, not yet, Brooke, thank you for willing to help us. We do need a lot of help. Coquenino is one of the largest counties, second largest county land base-wise. So, we need everyone. So, I just want to say thank you for your willingness and, you know, to be helping our constituents out there. So, thank you so much.
And with that, Madam Chair, if I may, it'd be my great pleasure to make a motion to appoint Brooke White Thorne to represent District Number Five on the Community Action Advisory Board for a two-year term to expire April 22, 2027.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Supervisor Horstman, second by Supervisor Antoferos. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is the item number thirteen Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and members of the board and, and members of the community, you know, when we get something right, we need to blow our horn and tell our community about it. And this is a wonderful, um, um, motion before us to approve a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation to accept the Arizona Smart Fund Grant and to approve a corresponding fiscal year budget amendment in the amount of $195,300. And this is really, covers that, that matching grant, or I should say matching fund we would have to make for the Safe Schools Grant. This covers it. So, it just is one more way that Public Works in our community have, have leveraged our grants and opportunities in order to accomplish what we need to do for our community. So, it's wonderful. It looks like Christopher Tressler is here to really give us the blow down on this. And thank you, Christopher, for you and your team on getting this done.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks Chair Begay and Chair Horstman. It's exciting to leverage these state funds towards the, more than $700,000 grant that we received. And it's undertaking, or it's funds that we're gonna use to undertake a project to make our roads safer. And it's with the Grant Match and then the Grant Safe Streets for All. It's nearly a million-dollar project to evaluate our roads and identify solutions to decrease serious and fatal accidents. And like was mentioned, we're able to get this match so that it doesn't have to come from our transportation fund. We continue to use those dollars in other areas. So, it's, uh, it's nearly 100% paid for, this study and this work by, by grants and grant matching funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments by the board? Supervisor Vasquez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tressler, for all your hard work and bringing this to us. And, you know, it just goes to show just how important the Smart Fund is and the local match dollars and how the state can help us get these federal funding. It's not the only Smart Fund that we've gotten. It also helped with the Protect Grant. And so, just wanted to, to recognize and, and thank everybody involved to, to be able to get those funds for our county. Thank you.
Supervisor Antoferos?
Good job, Mr. Tressler. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chris. I really, really respect your department and various departments, you know, facilities and others. You know, you guys go out of your way to get funding however which way. And, you know, if you can't get it, you know, you tell us and we try to work with you to, you know, uh, do that. But there are a lot of needs out there, especially with transportation. And I'm very glad that you guys are addressing that. And with the uncertainty of the funds, you know, we need to be extra careful out there, ensuring that, you know, we do have the monies first up front before we even start anything. So, thank you so much for all the hard work that you all do. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we, that we consider an approved Resolution 25 dash, 2025-19, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation to accept an AZ Smart Fund Grant and approve the corresponding fiscal year 2025 budget amendment in the amount of $195,300.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Supervisor Vasquez, second by Supervisor Antoferos. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and the next item is to approve an agreement and addendum to Flock Group to install 20 stationary license plate reader cameras with software, access to adjacent law enforcement cameras, and maintenance in the amount of $64,627 and 20 cents, seven, 20 cents in the first year, which begins upon installation and validation of the first camera. I know we, the board, did receive information about the whole use of the stationary license plate readers and the importance of this. And in terms of, quite frankly, safety and the protection of our community, and to really be an incredible aid for law enforcement. And I think the city has done this. And so, I'm really excited to hear about the opportunity to extend this beyond the city of Flag into the outlined county areas. So, it looks like we have, we're gonna get more information on this.
You may proceed.
Sorry. Uh, they, and this would basically add to their web of cameras. We've come up with 20 locations throughout the county strategically placed to where we would potentially catch additional data for this database. Essentially, how it works is these cameras photograph the back of cars as they drive by. It not only captures the license plate, but any unique identifiers, like if we have, if we're looking for a white vehicle with a bumper sticker on the back or, or anything like that, we can search the database for that particular information. That's extremely helpful, because a lot of times we have crimes that occur in the county where we just have a vague vehicle description. So, this will pick up any information with that vehicle description, and we can tie that back to the license plate number. And it provides our investigators leads to follow up on. So, it drastically increases our odds of getting this perpetrator or whoever off the streets to keep them from committing more crime. It also is linked to the national database. So, and a good example of this is several months ago, one of the cameras in the city picked up a vehicle from, it was a state back east of a armed robbery suspect vehicle. We were able to track that vehicle to the Walmart parking lot on the, on the west side Walmart and able safely take those people into custody without incident. So, essentially, it stopped their, their crime spree. Who knows what their plans were. They may have victimized somebody else in our, in our county. So, it's a great opportunity. Essentially, it's a great, a great way to leverage an innovated technology to make our, our county a safer place to live and also to, to visit. So, we're really excited about it.
Any comments by the board Supervisor Antoferos?
Thank you Chair Begay. I've been on a learning curve. You know, I haven't been at this that long. And one of the things that I have learned during this about three-and-a-half month period is the valuable tool that this is. So, I just want you to know that I am very supportive of this. And I would just like to thank you and Sheriff Axum for the work that you do in keeping our citizens of Coquenino County safe.
Supervisor Horstman?
With that, I would make a motion.
Wait, 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 wait.
No, I'm so sorry.
We're asking for comments. All right. You know, I, I think, I'm hoping that you have identified some sites north on 89. Um, coming down and we're talking about Adoni Park roundabout. I mean, people are going 80 miles an hour down that road. I drive that almost every time I come into Flag for work. And then also on the west side of the Sacred Peaks that, you know, that the turn, turnoff. I mean, that, right in that area too. I mean, we're going like 65 miles an hour there. And so, I hope that one of these, some of these cameras and we probably be saving people, you know, in that area. And there had been reports that there's accidents there. So, and if we can get more place out there somehow, get more funding. And I think we'll get, we can take control of a lot of these things that's happening. And it, it does, you know, help our communities to be more safer. And thank you and your staff and, you know, the demonstration for thinking about safety for our, for our, our people out there. So, thank you so much. With that, no other, if there are no other comments, I'd like to have a motion.
All right. I will make the motion to approve the agreement and addendum with Flock Group to install the 20 stationary license plate reader cameras with software to, in the amount of $64,627.20, as more fully set forth in the agenda.
Motion's been made by Supervisor Horstman. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
A second by Supervisor Antoferos. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is item number 15 Supervisor Horstman?
Number 15 is consideration and to award bid number 2025-04 to Video Ray LLC to purchase a submersible remotely operated vehicle to use in Coquenino County Sheriff's Office diving operations in the amount of $288,222.20. And I understand that this really was monies that were awarded to us through a grant opportunity. So, it looks like we can get an update on this.
Yes, ma'am. This was grant monies from the State Lake Improvement Fund, the SLIF Fund. So, this augments a boat that we received in 2022. And then, they're currently building a jet boat for the river as well through the same grant. So, it's state monies set aside for lake-related activities. So, specifically on this one, unfortunately, last year in Coquenino County, we had six drowning fatalities. And that's all the way from Lake Powell to the lakes around here in Flagstaff. So, it really became evident that we needed additional resources to respond to those. On several of those drownings, we had to call Maricopa County Sheriff's Office dive team up to assist us, which they're a great unit and they don't mind at all coming up and helping. But it just kind of let us know that we need our own resource. So, that way, we can respond to our own emergencies and then also respond to our neighbors and partners as well. So, this does a couple of things. It helps us find people at very deep areas within the lakes. And it also makes it safer for our divers. So, they don't necessarily have to go down underwater. They can use this device to, to go down instead of having humans go down there. It has technology to it that would help us identify things, whether that's evidence or, or somebody down under the water. So, so it actually enhances our ability to, to locate that. And in a lot of cases, that provides closure to the families that, whose loved ones may be a victim to this. So, essentially, we're, we're very excited to have this opportunity. It's really gonna increase our ability to, to respond to this. And I also wanted to note, because of the six drownings, it's kind of unprecedented for our county. So, we're also gonna, planning to partner with the state to get an educational campaign out, whether that's for our lakes around here in Flagstaff, Blue Ridge Forest Lakes, or up on Lake Powell or on the river as well. Just to remind people to wear their, their life vests and, and take other measures just to be safe while they're having fun, more or less. So, to try to prevent these tragedies in the future.
Okay Supervisor Vasquez?
Yeah, it's pretty cool that we're gonna get this technology to help the Sheriff's Office, you know, keep people safe. One, and two, in the tragic time that we need to search folks, help with that search. I had the opportunity of touring the new, the new boat up in Page at Lake Powell, I believe, last August. It was pretty cool. And the thought of having one of these submersive boats to go in and find some of these places where somebody might be missing can save valuable time and be safer for divers. They go where they know they're going rather than going in blind to these deep spots. And so, it's really important for public safety. And congratulations on getting the grant and look forward to seeing the results of having this technology, these resources. Thank you.
Supervisor Antoferos?
Thank you Chair Begay. I very much concur with Supervisor Vasquez's comments. And like I said with the military, I have been a lifelong supporter of our law enforcement. And I am really happy to see our Sheriff's Office growing in technology and continuing to add tools in the tool chest. So, thank you for the work you guys are doing. Very much appreciated.
Very much.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I, I feel that, you know, it's gonna be safe for our employees, our people that are gonna be, the rescue team. And their safety is important too. So, and to better use other alternatives to ensure that, you know, we, we find someone, you know, if, you know, that fell in the water, you know, I think, you know, this is something that we could really use. And it protects more people too. So, thank you so much. And yes, with that, is there a motion?
Yes, Chair Begay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the, the award bid 2025-04 to Video Ray LLC to purchase a submersible remotely operated vehicle to use in Coquenino County Sheriff's Office diving operations in the amount of $288,230.20.
Motion's been made by Supervisor Antoferos. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Vasquez. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. We will now go and resolve as a flood control district board of directors. May I have a motion to resolve?
So move.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Ontiveras and second by?
Second.
Supervisor Horseman. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Okay. All matters under flood control district consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by a single motion. Are there any items that board members want to consider separately? Supervisor Horseman?
Madam Chair, if I may, and I see our flood control district directors already at the mic, so I think she knows. I think it's really important for us to get an update on 17, 18, and 19. I know this affects our whole community and has been such an essential part of what we've been doing for flood mitigation work over, especially on the east side and, and Supervisor Vasquez in your district. So I think it's important to hear.
Thank you Supervisor Vasquez.
And I'm just going to add 20 to it because I'd really like to hear the update on the protect and where that's going, so.
Great, great. Happy to. All right, thank you Chair and Board members. It's great to be here this morning. We just had an update this morning. We have our weekly, various meetings weekly relative to government tank and, and all the work, you know, I think we've got five different projects under construction right now in that corridor. And the goal now is, or the target date for connecting everything is June 9th. So, so far they're doing really well with the projects. The boring under the highway, the, under Highway 89, it's a very slow tedious process. I mean, they literally go like four to six feet a day. But the boring was a third of the cost of the alternative of cutting the road and having to do all the backfill and everything. So it's slow, but it's progressing well. So far they haven't had any issues. And along with everything else, both on and off force, things are going really well and looking good. And we are still planning to do a tour. I'm waiting to hear back from the contractors when they're going to be comfortable with that for safety reasons. But we do want to get you all out there to see it. It's pretty, pretty amazing to see what's going on. So the detention basin, government tank detention basin is, they should be completing the excavation this week. And they're working on other components to that. The outlet or the storm drain outlets into the basin. So, and the storm drain, I think they're just about done with the storm drain on the east side of the highway, progressing on the west side of the highway. So again, things are moving really well. Before I jump into the individual items on the board agenda, I also just wanted to share that we did receive the two outstanding reimbursements from the US Forest Service. We had been, those had been delayed significantly. And so that was to the tune, the one for the flood mitigation through the GNA of the 3.4 million, we did receive that. And then we also received the smaller congressionally directed spending. We had put into some preliminary work, $8,000 and then received that reimbursement as well. So that's good that things are moving. Things are just moving really slowly. We still have two outstanding reimbursements from NRCS for about 2 million. But they are seeing things move. They're just moving slowly. And mostly that's a reflection of the fact of the layoffs and early retirements and things that staffing, the grants administration groups are, are very understaffed now. But at least things are moving, so that's good. Relative to the protect grant, I got a call, let's see, a week ago Friday, 4:30 from our representative, Phoenix representative with Federal Highways. And she said that she had just gotten an email from the program manager and who had asked them to fill out a fairly simple form. She went through some of the details of that form with me and we talked about what points we needed to emphasize with this project. And I mean, they, you know, they know very little about what's going on. We do know that all the, every protect grant is going back through a routine by DOGE or going back through a review by DOGE. And so she didn't, she, she was going to submit that the next Monday and I have not heard anything back. I, I told her I'd check in with her in the next week or so, but to let me know if she needed any other information. But that still is outstanding and that still is, is critical. In fact, one of the items that's on the agenda today, number 19, the Copeland Peaceful Way Basin Improvement Project. Frankly, I had hoped to cover that with the protect grant, but that wasn't possible. That is work that we need to do to prepare the basins for the monsoon season this year. And that particular item is, will be covered under the NRCS construction funding. The match to that funding, right now we're getting close, as you know, we're getting close to exhausting the DFFM match dollars. So likely part of it will be covered by district and part will be covered by the DFFM match. We'll just have.
Do you have any idea how that breaks down?
Well, about 25% of the 160,000 is the match. So what roughly about 40, 40,000. And right now it just depends on when we get the, when we get the reimbursement back, what, what level of reimbursements we get back from NRCS and the timing of that. But we're close to exhausting that. So, I mean, it could be up to 40,000, but that's still within, when we came to you in January, well within the limit that we discussed then. So, so overall, all, you know, things are moving, which is good. We are seeing some, at least some activity. I still concerned about protect and getting that movie. And I think if we don't see anything out of this exercise that's going on right now, I think we should take another, you know, take, do some additional communication with our congressional members and with others to try to get that back on the front burner to move that forward. I think this project in particular, there were concerns with the protect grants overall by this administration. But I think given this is a disaster response project, I think we warrant some additional consideration. So, you know, we'll be, we'll be working with you on that. Other items, the item 17, this is good news. We were provided some additional technical assistance funding. As you know, we had exhausted the technical assistance funding associated with the pipeline award for the four corridors for Wupaki Trails, Brandis, Copeland and Peaceful. NRCS, who gets a portion of that technical assistance funding, had not utilized all of their funding. So they're providing us with an additional $806,000. So that's basically to accept that and put that toward that. And that occurred because we, we requested the additional construction funds. And frankly, my bad, I should have asked for an additional TA to go with that as well. But they had excess TA and they're providing that, which should cover what we need for, for that corridor. So, so that's really good. And once again, witness the partnership of NRCS and how great they have been with us to share resources that they, they aren't utilizing. That would frankly just go back to the treasury. So this is good that it's going to the project. We're able to get more done. Item 18, this is related to the highway crossing. That highway crossing, you know, as I mentioned, we're doing a boring operation there. ADOT would typically have an inspector onsite and we would sometimes, typically we would share on some of that cost. They did not have any personnel available to cover that. So we were required to hire an outside firm, which was on contract actually with Public Works. And we're utilizing a different contract, but using, utilizing a contract that exists through procurement. And it says up to 250,000. The actual inspection service that we need for the highway crossing is $83,489. That will be funded by the district because it's roadway related. That cannot be covered under NRCS. So we talked about 19 and then item 20 is for geotechnical services related to the government tank, all those projects that I mentioned, the detention basin, the storm drain, the highway crossing. Those all require the inlet, outlets. They all require that materials be tested during that process. They test the soil, they test the concrete. That's just a normal part of a construction process. And we're again utilizing a different contract that we had available. I believe this was through one of the state contracts. And utilizing that, again, it's, the cap is up to 250,000. The total amount for all of the geotech services that we need for government tank is about 165,000. That will all be covered under the technical assistance funding by NRCS. So none of that will come from the district. So those are the four items that are on the agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for this update. This is good news. The only question I have, you indicated at the beginning that this is all going to be wrapped up, all the projects on June 9th, 2025?
That's the goal, is to have connectivity everywhere.
Okay. That, that's great. That is, that is really good news. And so that's, is, is that going to be, are we going to be able to really check all of that area off our, off our list then?
Well, we have done another, you know, when we get toward the end, we always do a set of modeling to look at the entire area. And right now it's looking like we still have an area, it's actually really related more to Brandis Way and that area where we, we have a gap frankly, in the flood mitigation there. And we do have additional construction dollars in that award. But I want to get it further along in the engineering before I bring that back to the board. One, we need to really look at how much impact can we have? There's, that area is particularly challenging because, for example, we have a channel on Brandis. We took, when we took on the tour, you got to see that. We have a channel there. We expanded that channel post pipeline. But we can't expand it any further because we don't have the capacity in the channel that runs along Highway 89. And ADOT chose not to update grade that with their emergency relief funds, which is unfortunate, but that was a decision they made. So, you know, we're looking at potentially likely having to do another storm drain and take that into the basins. And so we've got the capacity in the basins, but you know, will all that work? How much will it cost? So this, this wouldn't happen if we do go forward. This wouldn't be constructed until next spring if we can put all the financials together. So I am budgeting for it for next year. You'll hear about that when we need to do the budget session because that is the last gap, but we'll see. I mean, it, board will ultimately decide whether that's a good investment or not.
Right, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes, thank you for all the exciting updates. It's really cool to hear all the things happening.
It's pretty amazing that this was a really challenging corridor. We had a lot of challenges, as you all know, for land rights and everything else. And to be moving as well is really exciting. So thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And my question was going to be about, I know we have some funding that we've been waiting to be reimbursed and I know we've been waiting an update and I don't know if they're giving it to us later or now. So I figured I'd just ask the questions, kind of see where we're at on that.
Yeah, on, you know, on the reimbursements, we did get the reimbursements from the Forest Service, which had been outstanding almost 60 days.
Okay.
So that was really good news. We, we had known that it had been opened back up to the locals to go in and approve. Matt McGrath had shared, hey, I went in and proved it. Hopefully it's gonna go through. And about 10 days later, we got the payment. So, and we also got a payment for the smaller grant that we got through the congressionally directed spending, which we weren't, they were, they believed that it was still, the money was still there and everything was okay, but we hadn't actually applied for any reimbursements because we're early in that project. But it came through. It was only for 8,000, but they reimbursed us. So that's, we'll take everything we can get. So it feels like things are moving. It's just slow and it's, it's largely due to lack of staffing.
Thank you. Well, as you know, county services, when you cut staff, it makes harder to provide services.
Right. It's just, you know, the Forest Service doesn't, they, they've cut a lot of people out of their grants administration. Were cut, they didn't, were cut. And so, you know, they're doing the best they can is what we're hearing. So, but there's a cost to us. We're carrying that money.
That's.
And I'm going to have that, I'm going to ask the treasurer to do a calculation for us because I think we need to understand what is that costing us? Because there's a cost to taxpayers. If it's not, you know, being covered by the feds, then it's going to be covered by our local taxpayers. And she's doing a phenomenal job, by the way, managing all this cash flow. This is not, you know, we have a lot of money coming in and out of the county right now on these projects, a lot of money. Also, good news, this will come to you on hopefully May 6th. We got a payment from Transwestern Natural Gas Line. We did a project in the flood area that they benefited from and we made an appeal to them. We requested that they reimburse us for a portion of that cost because there's benefit downstream and to their product, their pipeline. And they had a lot of prob, their pipeline had been exposed many times in '22. And, and this is an interstate gas pipeline. This is not a little, this is a very, very large pipe. So obviously this could lead to a catastrophic event. This gas goes to California primarily, but it serves all of our area as well. So they were amenable and we took a little while, but we got the payment. And so that'll be coming to you to accept that, that funding. It's handled separately because it's coming from a private entity. So, but hell, we'll take everything we can, we can get. And that really helped with our project too. So on government tank.
No, thank you. And I think part of what, you know, it's exciting that the reimbursements are coming in, but it's important that we educate the community about the impacts of those 60 days and how that gives us difficulty for financial planning. So, thank you.
It is, it is. So, thank you very much. Any other questions?
No other questions.
All right.
I just want to say thank you again, you know, for really going out and getting funds and keeping on top of getting our reimbursements. And certainly we need all, every penny that we can get, you know, to maintain our, our services out here to the people. So thank you so much.
Thank you. If you don't ask, you can't get. And I want to thank Sean and.
Oh yeah, Sean.
I mean, they've done tremendous, you know, managing all this is a lot of work, a lot of work.
Yeah, thank you Sean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So can I make the motion to approve all four items on the consent agenda item? Or do I need to read each individual item?
The consent.
Okay. The motion will be approved. Can I make a motion to approve consent agenda items, please?
Yeah, and I'll second.
Okay, motions were made by Supervisor Vasquez, second by Supervisor Ontiveras to accept the consent agenda for flood control. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay. So now we, thank you again. May I have a motion to resolve as a board of supervisors? May I have a motion to resolve as a board of supervisors?
So moved.
Motion made by Director Horstman.
Second.
Second made by Director Ontiveros. All favor say aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. May I have a motion to resolve as a district board of supervisors?
So, so moved.
Supervisor Ontiveros, second by Supervisor Vasquez. All favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, we're with the jail district, the consent agenda now. May I have a motion to approve the jail district consent agenda item number twenty, twenty-one?
I would hereby move to accept the consent agenda. I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Director Horstman, second by Director Ontiveros. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. May I have a motion to resolve as a board of supervisors?
So moved.
Motion made by Director Ontiveros, second by Supervisor Vasquez. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, we are now at item number twenty-two, discussion.
We did.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, if you don't mind, Tim Carter is here and we'd love to give an update on some information that he has on emergency preparedness. Tim needs to be in Tucson at one o'clock, I believe.
Yes, he does.
Item twenty-four, I would give the floor, I, I would propose that I would give the floor to Tim for this discussion. So I should have let you know sooner, but if you don't mind skipping the item number twenty-four for emergency management update.
Yeah, I think we did. I think we're good.
Okay. Okay, what was that again?
If you don't, if you don't mind, I, I would offer that we skip to item number twenty-four and I would give the floor to Tim Carter with emergency management to give a bit of an update to you.
Okay, go ahead. Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be brief. Wanted to come and just give you a quick update on the fire prevention and education team. They wrapped up their two-week deployment here in Coconino County on Sunday. They had a very successful event. Want to thank Patrice Horstman for coming to see us for their closeout briefing.
I got a Smokey the Bear, guys. So you all missed it.
I, supervisor, I will say that they do have, we'll packets for each one of the board members over there. I'm not sure what's in them. So hopefully everyone will get a Smokey. But you know, this is the first time a program like this has, has come to Northern Arizona. It really took, took Coconino County and what they consider the Northern Arizona Zone. That we typically hear of when a wildfire starts, we will have like an incident management team gets deployed. That team is made up of folks from a lot of different agencies with a lot of different training. They come together to form those incident management teams. They get detailed to a specific place and coordinate, you know, wildfire response, things like that. This team operates very similar in the way that they're deployed, but they focus on fire prevention and education. So this twelve-person team came in, we had some locals from the Prescott National Forest, from the Kaibab National Forest, but other team members as far away as Florida, the Carolinas, Idaho, a lot of different states came in. Their main objectives were to essentially disseminate fire prevention materials throughout our area. Promoting their, your campaign slogans of spark safety, not wildfires. That's the, the, the prevention campaign that they were using. And I want to stop for a moment to say, to back up, say, why is this important to us? And, and it kind of goes without saying, you know, we're, we're pretty prone to wildfire up here, but I just got a map from our GIS team and I want to thank them for another project, but to kind of put it into comparison, since two thousand and eighteen to current, Coconino County, just in our county borders, has seen one hundred and seventy-seven wildfires that are non-prescribed fires, to one hundred and seventy-seven wildfires totaling almost five hundred and thirteen thousand acres. So that is an incredible amount of land. We know it is a huge problem for us. So how can we hopefully prevent that from the next fire from starting? So to do that, they started using GIS mapping to identify the top three causes of human-caused wildfires. And then the areas where those fires were most prone to historically to occur. Probably is no surprise, the top causes were debris and open burning, recreational campfires and vehicle and equipment use. So also probably no surprise, the top locations centered primarily around the San Francisco Peaks, following I- seventeen, generally I- seventeen down towards the Prescott National Forest, and then kind of along the I- forty corridor between Flagstaff and over towards Williams. Typically where we see a lot of our recreation and camping, you know, not too far from the highways, but you know, in those general areas. They went throughout the, the full zone, which does not completely include Coconino County. It also included Sedona. Other communities went through Flagstaff, Camp Verde, Cottonwood, Williams, Peach Springs, Grand Canyon West, Tucson, Grand Canyon Village, Arizona Strip. They met with leadership from the Navajo, Hopi and Walupai Nations. And, and really worked with those tribal entities. Attended dozens of events all across the zone, spontaneous engagements. They would just usually stop into Starbucks and talk to the staff there, put things on the bulletin board. You know, really use a lot of the materials that they created, flyers, stickers, magnets, little flags to put inside fire rings that say no fires under fire restrictions. You know, a lot of branded material to get out to, to promote spark safety. A lot of media interviews. They also were able to do some Spotify ads, which I didn't know really, I knew you could, didn't know how to do that, but they were able to use geo-located Spotify ads and ads at gas stations. You know, the little videos that play at the pumps around here. All that was at zero cost to the county. The only thing that it cost the county is we gave them a place to live for a couple of weeks. And by live, they took over the Ponderosa Room over on King Street. We were able to get them access to the building. So thanks to HHS and facilities for helping us with that. They took over that room. That was kind of mission control that they used. A great space for them. The overall cost for them, and I think this, this can't really be stated enough. And Supervisor Horstman and I were both really surprised when we saw this. The team spent over fourteen days. They spent one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. That was funded by the Southwest Coordination Center. So using federal funding for all of that, again, costs no county or local dollars. That's calculated to a savings of over five million dollars in suppression cost and losses to the county. You know, we know fighting wildfires and the losses to property is an incredibly expensive endeavor. You know, and anytime you can have preparedness, it's, it's definitely money well spent. So I, I would say only one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars compared to the, you know, over five million dollars of projected savings for suppression cost and losses. So just a very brief update from them. They did leave a lot of information for us. A lot of their, their leftover flyers, magnets and all the outreach stuff. Emergency management is going to take and incorporate into our outreach materials as well. A lot of it, it, it doesn't really have a specific brand, but it has a lot of local links to all the local jurisdictions for fire restriction information. So it's going to be a great complement to, to our messaging and our preparedness stuff that we're, that we're rolling out on a daily basis. So just wanted to provide you all an update on that. And on behalf of the team, they did ask me to express their thanks to the county and to the board for being so supportive along the way. So they are looking forward to coming back hopefully next year and doing this. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Any comments by the board? Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and thanks, Tim, and thanks for the overview and you being very modest. The, the group was very complimentary to Tim and, and emergency management for all the help they were giving, which we really, and I really appreciate. Learned a lot. I'm really glad an opportunity to meet with them, to go over some of their results. Their materials are excellent. So I'm glad everybody's going to get a packet and and that they shared their materials because I think it's a great opportu, you know, we know we have to deal with prevention. Bottom line is, is we can do all forest restoration in the world. And if we aren't dealing with the community and doing outreach on prevention, then we are doing a disservice to our community and really to the health and protection that we owe them. So I really was happy that they were here, that they did so much great outreach. And we can use these materials when we have community meetings or homeowners' meetings. You know, just getting the information out into the community and talk to the community that really it's all of our responsibility to engage in prevention and quite frankly, be aware of how we can be part of the solution here and reduce our wildfire risk. So really appreciate that, Tim, to you and your team. Great job. I'm really glad you were part of it and that you were so helpful to them.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ontiveros?
Well, I really appreciate this update because I know on that short trip between Flagstaff and Forest Lakes, we had an, I was kidding with that. We had an opportunity. This was something that was upcoming. So I really appreciate this update. And I will just say, if I can be a part, because I do have some upcoming community meetings that I'm going to be at, I think you do as well. We're probably going to, your office and I'm probably going to be at some similar meetings. But if there is anything that I can help you do to further pass these materials out, let me know because I'm happy to partner with you. And as I told military and our law enforcement, and now I'm going to tell you at emergency services, thank you for the work you do. I appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and the update. It's good to hear that our emergency response team, our emergency management team is, is preparing for a season that we're hoping will be light, but we got to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. And so appreciate your team working together to get the, get as much education out there to the community. And, and again, I think all of us on the board would be willing to pass out information if you have those materials. So if you could get those to us, that would be great. So we can help further that education of our arc. Thank you.
Thank you. And absolutely, I will, I'll leave your goodie bags from the team upstairs with your directors. And we'll coordinate with, I think, some of the handout material that's in there. So if you see stuff that you like, let us know, but I will coordinate with the directors and get you guys some material to hand out as well.
And to add that yesterday was the two-year anniversary of the two-year, three-year, three-year anniversary.
Three. Three-year.
So, yeah. So just to remember that, I think that was one of the earliest starts we had ever had.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then on May second, there's going to be activity on the courthouse lawn. And they're said, we're going to be setting up booths for the county. I'm not familiar with all the details. I'm not involved in setting it up, but it's First Friday Art Walk. And so I, I know I've been wanting to reach out, Tim, I think we're, I'd like to like set up a joint kind of booth there that we can get information out about reducing wildfire threat, both the forest restoration efforts and then efforts that we're all doing to try to, you know, stop the starts and, and other things. So coming into flood season too, we're supposed to have a real monsoon this year. And it could well start early, is what they're saying. So. We're going to hold you to that. I, I hope we do. It's time. And we need it. And the poor desert definitely needs it.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yeah, I just wanted to add for that May second event, if you're going to have visuals, maybe do something about commemorating or talking about tunnel fire and some pictures, some maps and whatnot. And then what it looks like now because we've done restoration and whatnot. So that way, you know, just kind of further and continue that, that story and that education.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I think education is key in all aspects of our work that we do. So I hope to have more of our programs out there, you know, supporting the booths that may be setting, be set up there. So thank you so much for all the work that you do and congratulations for and thank you so much.
Thank you. And thanks, Andy, for letting us cut in line.
Yeah, safe travels. Let me know how it goes. Okay.
Okay, item number twenty-two. How do you manage?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bagay, members of the board. I'd like to invite Sean Johnson to the podium to give a brief update for this. And Sean, I don't want to steal your thunder, but actually just was working on this, just got an email from County Supervisors Association with Secure Real Schools and Community Self-Determination Act has not yet been reauthorized. It looks like the payments, this is breaking news, right, Sean?
I haven't seen this.
Yeah, it's in your inbox. That, that will be going out are the twenty-five percent payments, and that's in lieu of the Secure Real Schools payments. The last time Secure Real Schools was not reauthorized was twenty sixteen. The payment, the twenty-five percent payment is four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, fifty-nine dollars for Coconino County. Compared to the Secure Real Schools payment, the last time we received in twenty twenty-three, two point four six million. So it's a two million dollar reduction. It's, it's concerning for a couple of reasons. We've utilized those funds to fund our superintendent of schools office for roads and schools, and also to offset road costs as well. So we'll continue to work on reauthorization. Sorry, Sean, I was just, or I just got the email at eleven oh seven. So.
I actually saw that and all.
Yeah. So thank you, Sean.
Absolutely.
And wanted to give that, that breaking news that we've, we've heard. So go ahead, Sean.
Supervisors, Chair, Vice Chair. I'll piggyback on Andy's. I was going to go last with SRS, but just to throw that out there, we are working with our superintendent. She is reaching out to superintendents across the state so that they reach out to their representatives, which is a huge deal because in the federal, our senators have signed on to a bill, their companion bills in the Senate and the House to reauthorize SRS. And our two senators have signed, but none of our state reps have. So we're trying to get everybody we can to call their state representatives just to let them know, hey, this is very important and we need this. So just to throw that in. But and then I'm actually going to turn it over to Liam, our intern. She's going to start us off and then I'll do that.
Good morning, Chair Bagay, Vice Chair Horstman and members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear this important update today. Government Affairs Manager Johnson and I, Government Affairs and Communications Intern, are here to provide an update on key issues affecting Coconino County, both at the state and federal levels. We will be discussing several critical topics, including wildfire preparedness, water policy, legislative developments, and key federal issues that could impact our county. I'll also highlight ongoing legal actions that could affect funding and services for our community. Let's begin with the most pressing state-level issues, starting with wildfire preparedness and water policy. Both topics remain top concerns across the state. State Forester Tom Torres briefed CSA, County Supervisors Association, county leaders on the two thousand and twenty-five wildfire outlook and emphasized the importance of continued collaboration on mitigation and resilience efforts. An especially timely topic as we approach fire season in our region. Water management discussions are also progressing with updates from the Arizona Department of Water Resources, highlighting key issues such as Colorado River conditions, tribal water right settlements, and rural groundwater strategies, all of which carry direct implications for Northern Arizona. On the legislative standstill, the legislature has reached an impasse with ongoing debates surrounding supplemental funding for the Division of Developmental Disabilities, specifically concerning the Parents as Paid Caregivers Program. This deadlock has resulted in Governor Hobbs' decision to veto all bills presented to her until a resolution is reached in that regard. Economic projections also suggest caution when planning for FY two thousand and twenty-six, with state analysts recommending a conservative approach to revenue estimates. Federal funding and employment concerns during a recent town hall in Flagstaff, April fifteen, Arizona Attorney General Chris Mays addressed issues raised by our local leaders, including Coconino County Chair Judy Bagay and Supervisors Caronimo Vazquez and Patrice Horstman. They reported disruptions such as frozen federal funds and job losses attributed to actions by the current Trump Administration's Department of Government Efficiency, DOGE. Mays indicated that these Mays indicated that these concerns might lead to new lawsuits aimed at protecting Arizonans from federal outreach. That being said, AG has already initiated several lawsuits against the current administration to challenge unconstitutional actions, including those related to federal funding freezes, birthright citizenship, education cuts, privacy violations, linked to Elon Musk's DOGE, and many more. Blocking the federal funding freeze, AG Mays has joined a multi-state lawsuit with 22 other states against a new policy from the Trump Administration that holds most federal funding to states, including Arizona. The policy threatens to cut critical resources for essential programs in Coconino County, such as healthcare, childcare, and housing support. It would jeopardize services like Medicaid, food assistance for low-income families, and the Head Start program, impacting thousands of residents. Additionally, funding for law enforcement programs, such as the high-intensity drug trafficking area, which aids in combating drug trafficking, would be frozen, putting public safety at risk. The lawsuit therefore seeks to block the policy, arguing it unlawfully overrides congressional authority and endangers the well-being of Arizona communities by halting vital federal support. She has also filed a multi-state lawsuit against President Trump's executive order to end birthright citizenship, arguing it violates the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. The lawsuit asserts that the president lacks the legal authority to override constitutional protections that grant automatic citizenship to children born in the United States of America. If upheld, the order could strip citizenship from thousands of children in Arizona, including Coconino County, but also affecting their access to services like healthcare, education, employment. It could also result in significant financial consequences for the state, including the loss of federal funding, and challenges to Arizona's voter registration laws. AG seeks to block federal agencies from enforcing this order. Also, along with 20 other state attorneys general, Chris Mays has filed the lawsuit to stop the Trump Administration's plan to dismantle the Department of Education. The administration's proposed ultima ed's workforce by 50%, would disrupt essential services for millions of students, including special education, civil rights protections, and financial aid programs. The coalition argues the administration lacks the legal authority to make such drastic cuts without congressional approval. They also have filed the lawsuit to block the Trump Administration's executive order aimed at dismantling three federal agencies that support public libraries and museums. The order threatens to cut funding for essential programs such as literacy development, digital resources, youth services, which benefit millions of Americans, especially in underserved communities. The lawsuit argues that the order, again, violates constitutional and legal protections regarding federal spending and seeks to prevent destruction of these critical resources. Finally, along with 19 other state attorneys general, Mays has also filed the lawsuit against the Trump Administration to stop the unauthorized disclosure of Americans' private information. The lawsuit challenges a policy that grants Elon Musk and the DOGE access to the Treasury Department's central payment system, potentially compromising sensitive data like social security numbers, bank details. The coalition argues that this policy is illegal. It violates privacy rights and could allow Musk to block critical federal funding. On that note, Musk's DOGE has also been seeking access to the IRS Integrated Data Retrieval System, which contains sensitive tax information of U.S. citizens, Arizonans also, raising concerns about transparency and adherence to federal tax laws. Meanwhile, the Trump Administration's plan to close over 120 IRS offices, including taxpayer assistance centers in rural areas like our county, could limit access to essential services. Finally, instability within the IRS highlighted by the recent ousting of Acting Commissioner Gary Shapley may lead to delays and uncertainties in tax administration impacting taxpayers nationwide. Shifting from state matters to broader federal updates, Sean will now address CDS, SRS, and other important ongoing developments impacting Coconino County. Thank you very much.
Chair, Vice Chair and Supervisors, I'm just going to give you a quick update. We did get three of our congressionally-directed spending CDS submitted, and those included the Emergency Operations Center, the Tribal Nation Service Center, and the Medical Examiner's Office upgrades. And the deadline is this Friday. And then just to go a little further into that.
Can you explain that? Cause I thought we already had some of these.
We did. Uh, these are resubmitted.
Okay. So, so I think that, so that's important. We've already done this once.
Exactly.
We're resubmitting them. Uh, does that mean then that they are, they were not? Cause I thought they were actually approved, um, prior, in prior fiscal years.
They were approved and then we did get, I want to say for the facilities project, we did get a percentage of that money, but we haven't gotten it all yet. And so that's with the FY 23 spending.
So when you're resubmitting it, are we starting all over again for something that's already been awarded to us?
Not starting all over, but we did have to compensate for inflation, which is.
So we're, I'm sorry, instead of saying starting all over, are we resubmitting?
Resubmitting.
We have, even though we've been awarded this once, we're, I know, but we're, but.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Did we get any of it? And if so, that's the point.
Sorry, my apologies.
So you might be able to amend it and get more money, but the point of it is we've already awarded this once and now it's been taken away from us. That's the point I want to make.
Absolutely. And then just to piggyback on that with the increases from what we haven't got it for the facilities project for the Tribal Nation Service Center went up 52% because now they're also asking for a 45% match, which wasn't in the 23 numbers that was required.
Well, I'm sure the cost of construction skyrocketed too. So what does this mean? Even though we were awarded this, it's dead. We aren't getting it.
Not yet. Yep.
Okay. So, and, and so that's why we're resubmitting.
Absolutely.
You understand what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make here?
Yep. We're getting there. And so.
And, and do you happen to know, because I was told, but then I was told maybe not, what's going on at Lowell Observatory with their thinning project, uh, and Observatory Mesa, which was also a congressionally delegated funding that was in fact awarded?
Good to know. Um, I am unaware of that, but I can definitely do some research and get that too.
If you can. All right. Thank you.
Of course.
All right. And, and I think when we're talking about just what's happened to us with regards to federal grants and federal programs, this needs to be included in that as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. And then that would cover for CDS. And then we just went over SRS as well. And happy to take any questions. Liam and I are here for you. All right. Sorry. Sorry.
I just want to know that, um, with the offset of the $2 million for the, um, SRS stuff, I don't know, um, is the county prepared in any way as far as addressing this, this, this amount that's not going to be there?
Chair Begay, members of the board, we actually are preparing for the recommended budget from our office, the county manager, to you as a Board of Supervisors. And we are accounting for these funding decreases, or in this case, um, for that funding, um, not being included in the budget. Um, it comes back to our emergency reserve policy that we discussed with you a few months ago. We talked about, I think the term we used was a runway for, uh, and so we're providing for that as well. And, um, so, um, stay tuned on that. We'll, we'll provide some information. On that first Monday, I think it's the fifth, Monday, the 5th, we'll give a presentation to you. We'll get you the materials beforehand that will talk about the state, uh, uh, of affairs at both the federal, state landscape, what that means for us, and any programs that may be impacted at the county level. Uh, where we are, um, accounting for that with our general funds through that emergency reserve. Now that said, the emergencies are, reserve is just that. It's not, uh, sustainable long-term to utilize those funds because it's one-time funds. They're not recurring revenues. They're funds we have in reserve for these types of occurrences, but it, it is included in the recommendation to you.
Supervisor Antovares.
Thank you, Chair Begay. I know, um, Mr. Johnson, that we had a conversation about this yesterday. And, um, Coconino County received, I think, an 81% cut in the SRS funding. That is substantial, $2 million. So two-part question. Does anyone, and this goes to you, County Manager, County Manager Bertelson as well. Does anyone hold out any hope at all? I know that both of our senators have signed on in support. Okay. You said that not, there is not one representative in the state of Arizona, not one.
Not one.
That has signed on.
Yep.
Do we, does anyone have an explanation for why our, why our representatives are not supporting the SRS funding? I, I realize you said call them or letters and, or, or would letters be appropriate? And is there any hope at all that this might, this funding might be restored?
Supervisor Antovares, members of the board, I think we should hold out a bit of hope and here's why. When I, I just pulled up some information on, on doing a bit of research, the state of Arizona for Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act divided among all counties. It's a $2 million impact to Coconino County. Um, it is a, uh, well, historically, the state of Arizona through the counties, $8.8 million. So almost $9 million. That then with the 25% in lieu of SRS payments, it would be $1.7 million. So it's, um, it's about a $7 million, uh, impact to the state of Arizona. Yavapai County, um, they stand to lose, uh, over a million dollars, for example, one of our neighboring counties. So I think that there's still some hope there. Now, when we look at that federal landscape and how it impacts counties throughout the West with our Western Interstate region, our WIR counterparts, I assume that would be significant for many of our counties. And so I would assume there would be quite a, um, uh, faction of interest throughout all of our counties to really encourage this being reauthorized. So I think we should hold out some hope. Uh, we have to, um, put an effort towards that collectively as counties.
If I may, and, and practically speaking, define that effort. Like what, what can I do? I, I, I really am troubled that none of our representatives have signed on to this. Does anybody have an explanation? Have any of our representatives throughout the state offered any reason why they have not signed on?
Supervisor, not that I know of.
Yeah. Supervisor Antovares, I, I can't speak to that. I, I think, um, it may be part of those larger federal deficit discussions. I don't know. Um, I'm, I'm making some assumptions here and, and so I'm not sure the rationale in terms of the policies and politics that, that are being represented at our, um, federal level. But, um, um, I think we should continue pushing and working with our, uh, western state, uh, congresspeople, uh, throughout the western states. And I think we have a lot of, uh, friends that could be helpful in our WIR landscape as well.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just saying, count me in and what I can do to help bring this to the attention and get this funding back. I think Coconino County, am I correct, sustained the biggest dollar loss in the state as a result of this?
Yeah. It's $2 million for Coconino County. Again, Yavapai County being the next, over a million dollars. Um, so it's significant for all of our friends and all the counties in Arizona.
Okay. All right. Well, count me in as being part of the solution. If there's anything I can do, let me know.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Horseman.
And Supervisor Antovares, I agree with you. Everything you've said, it's ridiculous, quite frankly. And if in fact they're here looking out for the best interests of our community, um, you know, certainly, uh, SRS funding is part of that and, and necessary for our community. So, uh, and, and it just isn't making any sense at all. Um, and I agree that we should, uh, as you've suggested, follow up with yet another letter, uh, and signed by all of us. And I know when we were back in DC just recently, we did meet with a number of folks back there, including our representatives. Um, I, I think we all felt that they were a very, um, that they seemed interested and they were listening. Um, but you know, listening is nothing if they aren't going to take action. So, uh, I think we should follow up with another letter.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes. Thank you for highlighting this, uh, deficit that, that our county can possibly face, $2 million. There's a lot of money, especially for our rural communities and the areas that really depend on, on these services. The fact that Yavapai County is losing a million and several other counties are losing, uh, probably several hundred thousands, if not millions as well, is very concerning. It impacts our rural areas and their ability to provide support in transportation and in education. And so it's so crucial that we're able to push this through. Uh, I'm traveling to DC next week. And so, uh, if you can give me the letters or some traveling points, I do have some meetings scheduled. And so I would like to, uh, add this to my list of talking points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and with those letters, um, I would suggest that we do send them to our whole federal delegation, not just our representatives, but yeah.
Okay. Any other comments by the board? Thank you, Sean, for the update. Yes. Okay. Um, next is Keith Burkus. He's not here, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So we just covered item number 22, which Keith would normally do, Sean, and Liam were able to cover that. The next item would be our planning calendar. And then we also have roundtable from the board as well. So Lindsay and I are prepared to, to cover planning calendar if you would like.
Yes, go ahead.
We, we will be on planning calendar. We are on item number 23. 23. Yes, you did. Yeah. Lindsay is working, Lindsay works hours that we normally don't. Yeah. Um, so with, she'll see a number of events this week, whether it be Stand Down in Page or United Way Luncheon, I believe that's on, today's the 22nd, that's tomorrow, the 23rd. Pallet to Pallet on Friday, the evening of the 25th. Our STEM Celebration on the 26th at Fort Tithill Viola Awards. So we're all, we're posted for quorum on all of these and, uh, take your pick on what you would like to attend. It's, it's, uh, uh, I think it's the springtime and everyone's ready to get out and, and, and collect and congregate. One thing that, um, Lucinda did note is the May 2nd, that's the first Friday Art Walk. And so we and Communications are preparing for a booth on first Friday Art Walk. So that's what, um, Director Andreani was referring to. That would be Friday, May would be beginning next week. So time is definitely flying. Uh, that leads us to our regional plan retreat on that Friday, May 2nd, Flagstaff City Council and the Board of Supervisors. I believe that's at our Public Works Facility at the city of Flagstaff on West Route 66. It's an all-day affair. So.
They're changing it. They're changing it, Andy. Um, they're, we're planning to now do it at Aquaplex. However, there's construction going on there too. So they may end up going back into City Hall. We'll, we'll see. Yeah.
We'll handle the changes and then let you know where to be and when. So. Maybe, uh, yeah, we, we could, we'll work with staff and, and, well, today, uh, we have our, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, a luncheon with them, and then a conversation about the, uh, the plan. And so that's an opportunity to have that conversation with our Planning and Zoning Commissioners as we prepare for this May 2nd joint meeting.
The nice thing about that is we don't have to worry about all of the, uh, uh, construction going on. And by the way, that joint city-county meeting with all of the incredible projects that they are doing, we're going to be worried about construction and traffic for a really long time here.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll try to let the planners do the planning and we'll provide input as we need to and on that. And, um, and then we have our budget meetings, May 5th through the 16th, two weeks. Finer print here duly noted on the stand downs. So Eric and I were texting, okay, we need to look at making some time for that. We're, we're, we're attempting to squeeze a few things in. Um, so this has definitely been a working agenda. It is. There's a lot happening and, but at the same time, it's important that we make time for departments. It's important for them to have FaceTime with you, talk about the budgets, and, uh, it's really a healthy exercise. Uh, we just met, uh, Eric and I and, uh, Uh, we just met, uh, Eric and I and, uh, our finance director, Siri Malaney, met with our representatives from the courts on Friday morning, very healthy conversation, just, just about the financial realities. At the same time, how some of the budget cuts could impact our services, like our mental health courts, like our recovery courts, like all of those services that are so important to our community and how we manage through that. So, um, we're having good discussions and, and really looking forward to, to, um, our department representatives, our presiding judge being able to have FaceTime with you.
Andy, if I may add, the 15th is already CSA as well, so it's, it's a busy day.
Yeah. So we are, yeah. Which, yeah, in some cases, we're going to have to.
We need the full board for the whole budget discussion. We can't abide. You, you just want to get out of it, no, no.
Well, we do have NAU graduation during that time, I believe, on the 9th Friday. So it's that season as well.
You know, we're doing what we can. I mean, budget is absolutely priority. We've got to, got to do that. And there better be plenty of chocolate.
Yeah. We've been trying to be good and I've been, I did have a chocolate bunny, um, but, uh, what, no, we'll bring in snacks and make sure that we are, uh, not crashing and, and bonking. So during, during those budget hearings, um, as, uh, Chair Baguette asked the question, just want to reiterate, we are incorporating the, uh, federal funding, um, shifts, cuts, et cetera, into our local budget. Because that's the one thing that we can, I think it's hard to control anything, but that's the one thing we can manage is our own, our own finances and how we're managing to it. So, uh, we're looking forward to, to presenting that plan to you. Heaven forbid, we have to use our emergency reserves in that way. We'll continue our effort for SRS. But if we have to, we do have a proposed runway. It's not sustainable, they're one-time funds, once they're spent, they're spent. But, uh, um, we do, uh, in terms of services to our communities, we are, um, proposing a plan that would allow continuation of those services for a period of time. Is that fair, Erica?
I think, um, during the budget meetings, you know, the, the board has made, um, our, pretty much some cuts here and there and, uh, revamp the way we use our monies and stuff like that. So, and with these funds and these, um, meetings that we're going to have, I think, you know, we all need to understand as departments that, that there may be certain things that we're not going to be, um, taking the whole or part or whatever, you know, we just, and how much, it would really depend on how much funding we have on the side. And then we still have, um, this thing about a lot of cuts going left and right. And we just really need to be careful within the next year and probably the following year until we can get back on our feet. So I know we've already got some plans in place for 10 years and, uh, that's including, um, uh, salary adjustments and stuff like that. But you know, that, those, everything will have to be taken into consideration. So I'm thankful that you guys are doing that and, um, really keeping a close eye on that too. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Baguette. And I think we're really setting up the conversations with our departments and elected officials, not to be adversarial, but just an understanding, an acceptance of reality across the board of where we are and working together to manage to those realities. I, I really believe that, that we're setting up that, that working relationship with our departments.
Supervisor Vazquez.
Yes, thank you for laying out, uh, what's going to be a fun two weeks, action-packed. The one thing I did, did want to request is, uh, when will we be getting our, our budget packets so that we can start reviewing and, and, uh, preparing for these?
Well, uh, I know they're being worked on right now. We, we might have to look into that and get back to you.
I know that the deadline for all of the departments, um, was yesterday and that Finance Department is putting the books together, um, starting today. And they actually are planning to come in this weekend to finish them up. So, um, to make sure that, um, next week is smooth, um, heading into that. So I know that they're working on those and they'll get those to you as soon as possible. Thank you to the finance staff for working this weekend on those.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm leaving for DC Tuesday morning and so if I could have it before then, that'd be great. If not, I'll be back for Friday, so hopefully we'll have it at least for the weekend.
Might have to get a separate suitcase for the budget book, but, uh, okay, yeah, that's, yeah. Anything else, Lindsay, worth noting? I know you've planned it out through June or July and I want to leave, make sure we leave time for roundtable as well.
And the manager's office did work in the CCC graduation that's happening, um, on May 12th into that budget schedule.
That's on Monday, right?
Correct, Monday, May 12th.
Yeah. We'll make sure that we, uh, yeah, have the, the sideline and, and so, yeah.
In the past, it, there, I mean, I've waited in line over an hour, so it'd be nice to.
I think I'm meeting with President Heiser in the next couple of weeks, so I'll make sure.
Yeah, if you can, we'd love to be there if, if we can.
Okay. Okay, anything else for the good of the order, Deputy Manager Phil Pot? So I think we'll leave some time for, uh, Chair Baguette's favorite, um, roundtable if you'd like.
And we can go ahead and take our lunch break now and we'll be back at 1:30?
Uh, 1:15.
1:15, I'm sorry, 1:15, we go back, be back in session. Thank you, bye.
We have a minute till 1:15. I know, this is a good bunch, huh? I have to use this on some meetings really loud. Okay, I know this is why I'm in it. Faster, so we'll go ahead and start the meeting for the afternoon. We're on item number 26. And this item is a discussion item, progress update and discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission on the County Comprehensive Plan 10-Year Update and the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan 10-Year Update. They would like to turn this over to County Manager.
Thank you Chair Breguet, members of the board. We welcome the Planning and Zoning Commission here today. We'll call to the podium, and I believe we have a presentation ready. Jess McNeely with Community Development as well as Melissa Shaw with Community Development and Sarah Decter with City of Flagstaff Community Development. So Jess, if you'd like to take the podium and then, or Melissa, and then feel free to, yeah, introduce all of our Commissioners here and welcome. Thank you, Melissa. Thanks, Lindsay, for... There it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to start over? Okay. We're excited to have the Planning and Zoning Commissioners here with us today to participate and give us some discussion points on some of the updates coming to you quickly regarding the Flagstaff Regional Plan. So did you want to go around and have the Commissioners introduce themselves? Okay, we'll start over here with Rose. I think so, yeah.
Good afternoon.
Whoa. My name is Rose Tohee, and I am representing District 4 on the PNZ. And glad to be here. Thank you.
My name is Saad Best. I'm here representing District 2, Ranama Vasquez District. Happy to be here. Thank you.
David Haywood, thanks for inviting us, guys.
Tina Berger, representing District 2, Ranama Vasquez. Thank you.
Hi, Sheila Walsh. I'm in District 4, Judy Baez District.
Good afternoon. I'm Larry Leslie, District 3, Bertamian Taveras.
Hello, I'm Mary Williams, District 1, Patrice Horst.
I'm Chair Tiana Burton, District 3.
Well, thank you Commissioners. And we will start out this afternoon's presentation talking about the County's Comprehensive Plan Update. And you've had some updates on this previously, but it's been a while. And this slide is just to orient everyone to Coconino County and the communities within the county, the different landownerships, and the vastness of the scope of what the Comprehensive Plan is intended to address. So just very briefly, all of you are pretty well-versed in why we have a Comprehensive Plan. And as well as the Commissioners, it's required by statute. This is our 10-year update to the 2015 Plan. So we are moving toward getting this before public hearings in time for that 10-year update. And just very briefly, this is the schedule that we've been on. We started this update in 2023 when we initially went out and did community outreach, pulled together background information in our data. And we then moved into drafting the plan and working with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. So that has been a process that's taken some months. And we can, we're excited to say that we are at the point now where we've wrapped up the drafting of the Comprehensive Plan with the Advisory Group. And we'll talk a little bit more about moving into what's called the 60-Day Public Review. So we are anticipating that this plan will be ready for public hearing later in late summer and early fall of this year. And so just to give a little bit of an idea of what's going on with the Comprehensive Plan, what might be new, what you might see that's different. Part of it is organization, and we're organizing this plan into three sections that share the common values that we heard when we did community outreach. The goal and policies, where there is a goal or policy that maybe needs more explanation, we're including a description about those to give additional context to the background for that. And then we're grouping all of the goals and policies at the end of each chapter. And they'll be identified with chapter-specific numbering. Just in terms of organization, a little bit more thought, you know, integrated approach to working your way through the document. We're also including several additional appendices in the plan. And one is actually going to be quite substantial. It's entitled, at least at this point, Existing Conditions Analysis. So we are taking a lot of the background data that we prepared and some of the information that we've learned, putting those in this longish appendancy so that we don't lose that information, if you will. So there'll be some of the charts and graphs that are a lot more detailed than what need to be in the plan, put in those appendices. And then, as we do every time with an update like this, we are updating the maps. And we have several new that have been created to inform the plan this time. And so we're excited to have that additional layer of information that we will include with this plan update. There is some content. Some of the content is also changing. We have a chapter that we've initially entitled Resilient Economies and Housing. Housing is a topic that has come up over and over again in the outreach that we've done. And so for this Comprehensive Plan update, we're including that in the title of that chapter for Resilient Economies and Housing, along with goals and policies and background information specific to housing needs, workforce housing needs, attainable housing, affordable housing, and the other types of housing that we know is needed county-wide. Something else that's new for this update, and that is in the Water Resources Chapter, which is a required element for this plan. And the state statute does require that the county put together projections on water demand. And so we were able to put those together for this update with a lot of help from partners with the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Group and the Partnership. So we were able to access a lot of data by experts that have already been working on understanding water use in the county for many years. So that's been quite helpful to the county and able to put that, for us to be able to put that together this time. One of the new maps that I mentioned a second ago was that we've put together a map called Existing Land Use Patterns. And we also were able to work with our GIS staff and also our advisory group in looking at land use patterns and really including on the map, showing what what is in use in terms of ranching. So looking at the private parcels, looking at assessor's data, and really understanding the on-the-ground land uses today. So we can start to see then what is occurring visually across the county on the private land. And it is an interesting, an interesting map. And then we've done some analysis as well to really learn how much of the land... And just again, I just want to remind us of all the land in the county. 12% is private land, and of that 12%, larger amount of that is being used for ranch purposes. So it's pretty current data. It tells a story, and that will be something that we're excited to include in this update. We're including a fairly significant, more amount of detailed background information for what we call the Communities of Coconino County. If you're familiar with today's Comprehensive Plan, there is a section in the back in the appendix called Communities of Coconino County, and it has a paragraph or so description of different communities. And I'll just go back to that map real quick. The different communities in the county. And when we went out to do the outreach and the focus group work, we put together what we call Community Assessment Reports. So they're just, it's data on 23 different communities at that point in time, including population information, what we knew about services, some of the land uses. So we'll be wrapping that into this background information for the plan. And that will then be housed on our Planning and Zoning website. So it won't add many pages to the plan itself, but it will be information available to communities once the plan is finished. And then finally, as with the current plan, there's an implementation plan that will go along with it. But this time, what we've done is worked with the advisory group to prioritize that. And then along with that, cross-referencing the different action items to a goal or policy.
Introduce all of our commissioners here and welcome. Thank you, Melissa. Thanks, Lindsay, for... There it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to start over? We're excited to have the Planning and Zoning Commissioners here with us today to participate and give us some discussion points on some of the updates coming to you quickly regarding the Flagstaff Regional Plan. So, did you want to go around and have the Commissioners introduce themselves? Okay, we'll start over here with Rose. I think so, yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Rose Tovey and I am representing District 4 on the PNZ and glad to be here. Thank you.
My name is Saad Best. I'm here representing District 2, Ranama Vasquez District. Happy to be here. Thank you.
David Haywood, thanks for inviting us, guys.
Tina Berger, representing District 2, Ranama Vasquez. Thank you.
Hi, Sheila Walsh. I'm in District 4, Judy B. Hayes District.
Good afternoon. I'm Larry Leslie, District 3, Bertamian Taveras.
Hello, I'm Mary Williams, District 1, Patrice Horst.
I'm Chair Tiana Burton, District 3.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. And we will start out this afternoon's presentation talking about the county's comprehensive plan update. And you've had some updates on this previously, but it's been a while. And this slide is just to orient everyone to Coconino County and the communities within the county, the different landownerships, and the vastness of the scope of what the comprehensive plan is intended to address. So, just very briefly, all of you are pretty well-versed in why we have a comprehensive plan. And as well as the Commissioners, it's required by statute. This is our 10-year update to the 2015 plan. So, we are moving toward getting this before public hearings in time for that 10-year update. And just very briefly, this is the schedule that we've been on. We started this update in 2023 when we initially went out and did community outreach, pulled together background information in our data. And we then moved into drafting the plan and working with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. So, that has been a process that's taken some months. And we can, we're excited to say that we are at the point now where we've wrapped up the drafting of the comprehensive plan with the advisory group. And we'll talk a little bit more about moving into what's called the 60-day public review. So, we are anticipating that this plan will be ready for public hearing later in late summer and early fall of this year. And so, just to give a little bit of an idea of what's going on with the comprehensive plan, what might be new, what you might see that's different, part of it is organization. And we're organizing this plan into three sections that share the common values that we heard when we did community outreach. The goal and policies, where there is a goal or policy that maybe needs more explanation, we're including a description about those to give additional context to the background for that. And then we're grouping all of the goals and policies at the end of each chapter. And they'll be identified with chapter-specific numbering. Just in terms of organization, a little bit more thought, you know, integrated approach to working your way through the document. We're also including several additional appendices in the plan. And one is actually going to be quite substantial. It's entitled, at least at this point, "Existing Conditions Analysis." So, we are taking a lot of the background data that we prepared and some of the information that we've learned, putting those in this longish appendancy so that we don't lose that information, if you will. So, there'll be some of the charts and graphs that are a lot more detailed than what need to be in the plan, put in those appendices. And then, as we do every time with an update like this, we are updating the maps. And we have several new that have been created to inform the plan this time. And so, we're excited to have that additional layer of information that we will include with this plan update. There is some content. Some of the content is also changing. We have a chapter that we've initially entitled "Resilient Economies and Housing." Housing is a topic that has come up over and over again in the outreach that we've done. And so, for this comprehensive plan update, we're including that in the title of that chapter for resilient economies and housing, along with goals and policies and background information specific to housing needs, workforce housing needs, attainable housing, affordable housing, and the other types of housing that we know is needed county-wide. Something else that's new for this update, and that is in the Water Resources Chapter, which is a required element for this plan. And the state statute does require that the county put together projections on water demand. And so, we were able to put those together for this update with a lot of help from partners with the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Group and the Partnership. So, we were able to access a lot of data by experts that have already been working on understanding water use in the county for many years. So, that's been quite helpful to the county and able to put that, for us to be able to put that together this time. One of the new maps that I mentioned a second ago was that we've put together a map called "Existing Land Use Patterns." And we also were able to work with our GIS staff and also our advisory group in looking at land use patterns and really including on the map, the showing what is in use in terms of ranching. So, looking at the private parcels, looking at assessor's data, and really understanding the on-the-ground land uses today. So, we can start to see then what is occurring visually across the county on the private land. And it is an interesting, an interesting map. And then, we've done some analysis as well to really learn how much of the land, and just again, I just want to remind us of all the land in the county, 12% is private land. And of that 12%, larger amount of that is being used for ranch purposes. So, it's pretty current data. It tells a story. And that will be something that we're excited to include in this update. We're including a fairly significant more amount of detailed background information for what we call the Communities of Coconino County. If you're familiar with today's comprehensive plan, there is a section in the back in the appendix called Communities of Coconino County. And it has a paragraph or so description of different communities. And I'll just go back to that map real quick. The different communities in the county. And we've, when we went out to do the outreach and the focus group work, we put together what we call Community Assessment Reports. So, they're just, it's data on 23 different communities at that point in time, including population information, but we knew about services, some of the land uses. So, we'll be wrapping that into this background information for the plan. And that will then be housed on our Planning and Zoning website. So, it won't add many pages to the plan itself, but it will be information available to communities once the plan is finished. And then finally, we, as with the current plan, there's an implementation plan that will go along with it. But this time, what we've done is worked with the advisory group to prioritize that. And then, along with that, cross-referencing the different action items to a goal or policy, and then vice versa. Where there's a goal or policy that has a specific implementation item, we are cross-referencing that back to the implementation plan. So, there's been a lot of work going forward with our advisory group to think about, you know, what would be important to implement this plan, and then to prioritize that to some degree. This next slide, this shows the current structure of how we are proposing to organize it. It's, the chapters are very much the same as in the current plan, but we will be grouping this into three sections essentially. One called Rural Lifestyle. And again, this is tearing off of the work that we did with the focus groups and all the outreach response and feedback that we heard, that there is definitely a theme about rural lifestyle that's important to county residents. And so, falling under that, under that one section would be Land Use Growth and Development, our Circulation and Transportation Chapter, and then Resilient Economies and Housing. And if you can see the asterisks, we, I did call out here what is actually required by statute that this plan addresses. So, Land Use Growth and Development, obviously, this is a land use-related document. So, the focus of it really is land use. But there are these other elements that statute does require that we include, circulation, transportation being another one. And then, there's another section that we've called Stewards of the Natural Environment. And then, you can see four chapters grouped under that. One entitled "Natural Environment," another Parks, Open Space, Trails, and Recreation, and then Water Resources, and then finally Sustainability, Resilience, Energy, and Climate. And of those, the energy portion of the Sustainability, Resilience, Energy, and Climate, that is required by statute, it actually is very complimentary to the discussion on sustainability. So, that's why that was grouped with the rest of those, that topic. And then, these others, Water Resources, Open Space, Natural Environment, those are elements that ARS would like this plan to address. And then finally, the third section is what we've called Diverse Communities and Services. And we've taken what is currently two chapters in our plan, Public Safety Chapter and Community Services, combined them because there's a lot of overlap between the two. It's a pretty, fairly robust chapter, but it's got a lot of new information in it. We've talked about county facilities. We've talked about libraries. We've talked about elections. So, it does cover a lot of county services in a very brief update. And then, we do have finally a chapter that is an expansion of our Community Character Chapter that we've called Diverse Cultures and Community Character. And so, that includes topics on community character, which is noise, dark skies, those types of scenic resources. And then, Diverse Cultures is more information about all of the diverse communities that reside in the county. So, that is, these are, this is just an outline of the intended revision to our structure. And then, this graphic is intended to show the relationship of all the different plans with the comprehensive plan being in the center. And tearing out of that, the different levels or the different spheres, if you will, the further out they go, the less direct relationship they have to the comprehensive plan. But it really does, when you read the details, it is intended to show all of the different county efforts going on in a relationship to the plan, with the comprehensive plan in the middle. And then, directly amended to that would be the Joint Land Use Study, the County Area Plans, and then, of course, the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan. Moving out from that, then, the subdivision and zoning ordinances are directly influenced by the comprehensive plan as well, particularly if there are any updates needed to those to be in alignment with the plan. And then, the circle on the outer edge, the plans and regulations and collaboration, all of these departments that are represented by this ring have had a hand in updating the comprehensive plan. And then, these different documents, different types of plans, Emergency Operations Plan, the Facilities Master Plan, the Flood Plane Development Code, they're not directly influenced by the plan, but they're in alignment. So, we wanted to show that, this is a lot of information on this one graphic, but it does, we try to reflect the breadth of the work going on in the county and then where this works in terms of comprehensive plan influence. So, happy to, very interested in hearing feedback on this as well. So, what is next in terms of the comprehensive plan? As I mentioned, the advisory group, and I want to acknowledge that we have two members of our advisory group with us today that are on the commission, Rose Tovey and Tiana Burton. They've been helping us with this, as well as we have eight other members. And they finished their last review of the draft chapter April 14. And then, we are getting ready to start the 60-day public review and open houses in May and July. And then, after that, we'll be moving into public hearings after the 60-day review is concluded. So, then, the next topic that we wanted to go over with you is Flagstaff Regional Plan. But we wanted to show you this slide because this shows, within the entire county, the Flagstaff region. And this is an important image because the area around Flagstaff outlined in that purple is, shows the Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary. And also, that is the boundary for the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update. And we'll talk in more detail about that. But this is something, a segue into the next topic that we have to talk about with you, and that is the Flagstaff Regional Plan. So, I can continue on and hold questions for later, or if you have questions about the comprehensive plan, we can, we can talk about those now. Continue on. Thank you. And so, as we just looked at, as far as the circular plate graphic, the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan, it functions as a general plan for the City of Flagstaff. And it is an amendment to our county's comprehensive plan. And it has been an amendment to the comprehensive plan for at least two previous iterations. So, it is something that the county and city have worked on together for many years. And we use this as we would use an area plan in evaluating land use decisions for projects that come up within that region. And again, just there's that region and in relation to the entire county. So, just to kind of talk a little bit more about what portions of the county that the regional plan includes, it includes all of Donipart, Timberline, Fernwood, all of Belmont, Gina Village, Mountaineer, most of the Fort Valley 180 Cina corridor. It does go north and then about, it includes about 2/3 of the Fort Valley 180 Cina corridor. And then, something to really think about, it's about 2/3 of the county's population that lives within this region, between the city and the county areas. About 2/3 of the county's population lives in that region. And so, we, you all have a copy of an agenda that will be, is taking place as far as next week with your regional plan retreat. And so, we wanted to give you an update about the regional plan retreat and how that's coming together, and some information about what has, what is being prepared for you for the retreat. And I'll just talk through some of these points. And then, we've got Sarah Decter here to add on to that. And so, the draft plan and the retreat agenda, again, you've got this, it is this, this handout. This is the draft. We're planning on getting this, the final draft posted on Monday. So, one of the things we'd like to ask of you today, if you have any comments on what is on the, on this draft agenda. We are, we're working on the plan. Staff is working on the actual plan updates at this point to ensure that those can be implemented. And we'll have to provide the updated draft of the plan after the retreat is concluded. The 60-day public review draft is available. And if anyone needs to see that or wants a hard copy, we can get that to you. So, the retreat agenda has some specific topics. And you'll be getting memos about those that will give you some background information. So, they'll be, you'll be able to be prepared to discuss those in pretty, pretty solid detail when you get to the retreat. So, again, we're looking for some feedback to find out if there's anything else that you would like to understand on this agenda that's not included on it. And so, the, just to give you a brief update on the timeline for adoption of the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan, we are looking to provide for the retreat the key milestones that the land use plan is attempting to achieve. So, that will be available for the retreat. And then, just so you know, the ballot initiative is now scheduled to be called for May of 2026. So, about a year from now, a little over a year from now, it's a ballot initiative. And just why that's important is people that are residents in the city, within the city limits, will actually be voting on this. County residents living outside the city limits do not vote on the regional plan. And that's a statute. That's a state statutory. Okay. It's a difference in when the growing smarter legislation came about, then cities and towns have different requirements than counties. And then, just another update, the Aquaplex is being renovated. That was the initial chosen location. We are looking for an alternate place where there's bus service and where there's also the good virtual meeting equipment. So, we will let you know as soon as possible when we nail down that location. And I'm going to ask Sarah if she would like to come up and add anything to this before we go into questions.
Supervisor Horstman? Can we get a hard copy before the retreat?
Of the 60-day review? Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Let me know, would all of you like a hard copy? Okay, thanks.
I had just, I'm so glad you asked, Chair Horstman, because I just rescued some binders from the recycle bin today. So, I'll even get them to you with the recycled binders. Thanks to our staff at the landfill for providing those. But I think that, you know, we are, we are paying very close attention. Doing this as a joint document adds complexity to creating a policy document that serves as a land use plan for the region. And so, you know, we were, we are looking to make sure at this retreat that some of the biggest issues have gotten a good attention from everyone who's going to be seeing them at public hearings, and that there is clarity about the direction we're going with those parts of the plan. And so, right now, the retreat agenda really focuses on the bigger structure of the document. What are the priorities and goals? Because if those aren't right, I have a lot of rewriting to do. Not a little, but a lot. So, we definitely have to check in on those before we finalize the document. And likewise, the future growth illustration, which is very important for all land use decision-making that your planners and the city planners are using with this joint framework, it needs close attention. It needs to be calibrated so that the way it is written works for both the city and the county. And that's what staff is spending extra attention and time, making sure we are getting right before we put out a new draft. So, we are also, the other two items on the agenda are the trail maps, because there is a lot of data questions and which maps are our policy. The city has, there's some differences in our minimum requirements for plans for the city and county when it comes to trails. But we, we've worked very hard as a region to have a regional trails initiative and to understand our regional trail needs. So, we want to make sure those are clear and understood. And then, the last is a, is a policy question that was really raised in the 60-day review, which is, the, many of the community members would call it community character. But we are trying to move to something that really talks about place-making and a sense of place being created when new development or infill or redevelopment is occurring throughout the region, that there's, that you're getting more than just, you know, a utilitarian building. You're getting something that more fits. So, we're trying to find the right way to approach that. I think our current plan is very heavy on those topics. So, if there is something that doesn't fall in those four categories that you would want us to include in the agenda, or maybe even at a separate work session at a future date, that's the kind of feedback we're looking today. So, we can go back and consider revisions to the agenda, also hearing from the City Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council tonight so that we can get a new agenda and a packet to you next week that meets your expectations. So, that's what we're working on. Supo Harex, Aunt Taveras?
Okay. And I actually, I'm not sure if this question is for Ms. Decter or Ms. Shaw. So, at the, at the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan Retreat Agenda that's going to be on May 2, that is going to be, I'm just making sure I understand this, with City Council, Flagstaff Planning and Zoning, Coconino County Planning and Zoning, and the Board, right? So, that's a total of what, 30 people? I think we'd, 29 people.
29 people.
Okay, so there'll be 29 people there. And then, how is that, I'm just curious, just trying to get ready for this retreat. How are you going to facilitate 29 people?
So, our partners, our contractor, Cascadia Partners, who did the scenario planning for us, are bringing two in-person facilitators to Flagstaff to run this meeting. And they will have a separate online facilitator for folks who are joining online. So, we will have three professional facilitators running a group that big. We also, we will not be running it by the typical Robert's rules. I think I should just prepare you for that. You will be getting out of your chairs and putting sticky notes on walls and marking up maps and having discussions at tables, and then coming back and providing summaries. So, it is, it is not going to be, let's sit around and take a turn talking all the time. Because that's not going to get enough interaction or chances for people to really grow their understanding of the material. And this is the deep, important material that we want to make sure is, has some level of discretion and could even be, you know, community values that might need trade-offs. We really need to hear in depth from, from all 29 people who are going to be part of the hearing and adoption process. So, it won't be the way we're doing this meeting. Some parts of it will, so that we get it all recorded and on the record. But there will be periods of time where you're moving around the room and doing other things as well.
And kind of breaking us up in smaller groups?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And I know that we're working on this jointly, but it's not a joint plan. Like, it's a, it's a Flagstaff Regional Plan that will be an amendment to the Coconino County Comprehensive Plan.
Well, that's right. But we do adopt it as an amendment to the plan. So, similar to one of our area plans. So, it is a joint plan in that sense.
Okay, okay. And can you, Ms. Shaw, can you go back and pull up a map that you had? I think it's about four, that one right there. Okay, so, we have the box around the Flagstaff Regional Plan. And many of those areas do not, and I know we've had this conversation before, but we're going to have it again. But many of those areas, the City of Flagstaff is the only entity that is going to be voting on this plan. County, county residents have no say in this plan whatsoever, but they are included in that box per se. So, is there going to be any really explicit verbiage that states that this plan is strictly for residents or developments that lie within the City of Flagstaff city limits?
Yeah, well, there's a two-part answer to that. So, county residents will have an opportunity at public hearings to comment on the plan. So, that's something very important to remember, similar to the comprehensive plan.
But they can't vote on it?
No, and neither will county residents vote on the comprehensive plan.
Right.
That's just a difference in statute. So, they'll, but they will have a lot of opportunity to, you know, comment during public hearings.
Right.
With both the commission and the Board. And then, the issue, what we...
Let me add something to that if I could. So, I would actually take your cant and turn it into a can.
Okay.
Coconino County is the only county, Coconino County residents are the only residents in the state of Arizona who get any input into a municipal plan. That is actually the way it is. For instance, I'm trying to think what the city is next to Eloy. Down in the South Valley, there are cities that write their, their general plans and say, we're going to go annex that other city over there. And that city has no, no say in that at all. The county residents between those communities do not get a say in that. It goes straight to the voters. Where Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff have worked together to make sure that there is a voice for county residents in the region in the plan. It is more than any other county resident in the state of Arizona gets. And the reason, I mean, the reason it goes to the ballot in the city and not in the county is as mysterious to me as it is to all of you. I don't know why they haven't created some parity at the legislature for that yet, because it seems that either both should go or neither should go. It is confusing to applicants. It's just an artifact of some legislative negotiation from 2006 that we're all still, still living with 20 years later. But that, the compromise has been to create this joint policy document. If, if I had gotten... If, if I had gotten direction early in the process, we could have created a shared land use map and two policy documents. But that is not the feedback I got from City Council and the Board of Supervisors, is that I have to create, and Melissa and I have to create, a document that serves both jurisdictions equally well in a single document. And that is, that's been our marching orders since March of 2022 or 2023, so.
And, and I, and I do, I absolutely understand what you're saying. And when I said no say, what I meant was that only city of Flagstaff residents get to vote on the approval of this plan. Then the plan is adopted as an area plan to, as an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. So maybe, let me, let me rephrase my question. So let's just pick on, let's pick on Belmont, okay? Because it's, it's in, in here. Even though it's in the Flagstaff Regional Plan, this regional plan will not have any impact on land use issues in Belmont. That's where the Comprehensive Plan picks up.
It actually will. Now, just go back to this diagram. And so just thinking about, just pick a rezoning case in Belmont.
Let's just pick on Belmont.
Let's pick, pick on Belmont.
Let's just pick on Belmont. Yeah, let's pick on anything in District 3.
Okay, well then, there you go. We'll, we'll do that.
Yeah.
So if there were a subdivision or a rezoning case or a conditional use permit application that came forward from Belmont, the Belmont area, when that project is reviewed by staff and then referred on to the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the Board of Supervisors, depending on the level of review needed, we review the Comprehensive Plan and all the amendments associated with that. So the Comprehensive Plan, the Belmont Area Plan and the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan. So that's why often when you get a staff report, you will see an analysis, including goals and policies of all three of those documents and how they relate to that project and whether or not that project is in alignment and in compliance with those goals and policies. So we do use those, and that does add to complexity of those cases for any project within the Flagstaff region, because we, excuse me, all of the communities within the Flagstaff region also have an area plan, a county adopted area plan. So we're looking at all three. Sometimes we're also looking at the joint, joint land use study.
Right. Because I remember, and this was when I was on P and Z, that there was discussion about calling out for city only. Do you remember that discussion? Okay, tell me how that fits into here, how that's going to be like lined, if you will, or highlighted maybe is the better word.
I, I think that, that's a great question and exactly how you just phrased it, where there is a goal or a policy in the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan where there is overlapping priorities and some may be higher priority for the city or not a priority for the county. We are identifying which are city-only specific. And if there's one for county-only, identifying which would be applied for the county-only or where it's a shared policy or goal, then we can apply that to both.
Okay.
Both jurisdictions. So it's trying to be very clear.
Okay. And I guess probably just for the sake of this meeting, we'll let it go for now. But I'm assuming that this is going to be something that will come up at the retreat, having those, having those very much highlighted.
And I, I do know that we're working on preparing documents for you that you'll be able to see before the retreat that will illustrate how the goals and policies are, are working for the regional plan and then the structure for that as well.
Okay.
Oh, we're not going to show that at this point?
Yeah, so, yeah, let me just, let me jump in. We are not yet prepared because of where we are in legal review to share the draft, the updated revisions to policies at the retreat. That is one of the things on the slide where Melissa had the talking points here, that the updated draft, especially listing all the policies, will not be provided until after we get direction from you on some of these bigger issues. What you will see is the six priorities and the goals.
The six priorities for the city?
No, these are shared priorities.
Okay.
And so if they are not shared priorities, if they need to be reexamined, if we need to say the city may have this priority, but the county is not, would like it worded differently or it needs to be written more universally, that's the level of conversation and feedback we need, because we would have to reorganize a lot of things if those priorities get redesigned.
Okay, and that will come up for discussion at the retreat.
Yeah, that will be part of work session one at the retreat.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Voskis?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And, and I just want to remind everybody that at the end of the day, these different plans are playbooks for us when we have to do land use hearings in Belmont. So even though the community might not directly be able to vote on the plan, one, they get input, but two, that plan is for us to use when we're making decisions. And so that's where our constituents can also talk to us to give us their opinions on it, using that plan. Thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor Horstman?
Right.
Yeah, and, and thanks. And Melissa, I know you and I were talking at one of the community meetings that we, the Board, have come up with our new mission, vision, values. And I think at the time, you didn't realize that, and, and probably we hadn't formalized them yet. But obviously, those need to be given up, but also included within the Comprehensive Plan, obviously. And I, I think that have that in there. So.
I just wanted to call your attention to this graphic, because this is the update process for the regional plan. And the Phase 3 and Phase 4 transition is this joint retreat. So this is where the plan draft, has been drafted, has been created, and before it moves into council adoption, county adoption, and then the city ballot initiative, that's where this joint retreat is really important, to move that on to the next phase. And then we have questions and comments for you.
Any other questions by Board? Comments? No? County manager?
Thank you, Chair Baguette. No questions, no comments. Thank you for the explanations, Sarah and Melissa. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Horstman?
And, and I know probably Supervisor Antovaris probably feels similar to me on this. You know, Coconino County, and I'm just going to use Flagstaff and Greater Flagstaff, the Greater Flagstaff area has seen such large growth, and especially the area right outside of Flagstaff, municipal Flagstaff. And yet, it's so connected in every single way. And, you know, and I know that, I think that's a big change from the last Comprehensive Plan. So although I'm sure it's going to be challenging and has been challenging, I understand why it's together and not two separate documents, because it is really, it really has turned into Greater Flagstaff. Now, obviously, there is a huge area outside of Greater Flagstaff, because we are the second largest geographically in the country. So we understand that. But when you've got the, what is it, three quarters?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds of the population within the Flagstaff and Greater Flagstaff area, I, I see why they are together myself. So anyway, just a comment to make, because I do think that that is a big difference between this Comprehensive Plan versus the last Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, I'd just like to say that, you know, before, I know that, you know, we all serve the same population, you know, here with Flagstaff outer, outside of the Greater Flagstaff area and throughout the whole county. So it's about time that, you know, we're integrating the plans together so that we address and work with our constituents out there. So I'm really happy to see this. And I'm looking forward to the retreat too. So thank you so much for all the hard work that you guys do. It's not easy, especially if you have a lot of people involved and you have different, different types of thoughts and, you know, but still yet, you know, it, it is hard, but you guys managed to do it. So keep on truckin'. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time. And I know that the commissioners are here. I didn't know if you wanted to ask them if they have any questions?
Well, yeah, do, do they have any questions?
No, maybe they want to share something.
I would love to hear from them, what their thoughts are in the process and trying to get this in one document and just any input they might provide us before we go into the whole retreat with the city of Flagstaff. I'd love to hear from you all.
Probably speaking for him too, so, and everyone else. I think the direct relationship with county and city that you all just brought up brings to mind a lot. I've been off and on here 40 years. I think the conundrum is housing a little bit. There is some other things, but directly related to housing, we have a direct shortage. We're in an emergency housing event that has been unprecedented. And I think what we have to remember is that even though we are developers or private owners or what we are, we still have to provide housing that fits within the parameters of affordable somewhat, okay? But then also, I think that employers need to come up a little bit and be given a little bit of a hand to provide housing as well. We have some large landowners left in Flag, and they're questioning the same thing. So they only have this much land they can use, they're crunched in or whatever's going on. But the housing to me is, is becoming crucial. We have to give a little bit more thought as to how we're going to, you know, meet the demand versus what we need to provide to our people. And, you know, coming off the 10-year housing plan, the one thing that stands out is we're not, we're not impacting the right people. So we're going to work on that a little bit more. And that's where my direct visions coming from, saw David, you know, everybody just wants to make sure we're protecting our housing. We don't have a lot of land left that's private. So the thought there is, we've got to be a little bit more mindful as to how we're going to progress in our housing market, being mindful of employers, employees, and specifically our direct residents. Thank you.
Just, just like, so.
I, I want to agree with Tina on the, on the housing issue. And I want to frame it a little differently. It, it seems to me that we are somewhat separated in our housing programs. And we both have the goals, but my question is, how do we work hand in hand? How do we have a program in the city which is, has a very different structure than the county? How do we translate some city programs and county programs and have them working together? And what do I mean? I don't know. But I'll give you one example, and that is, the city has got a great ADU program, accessory dwelling units, mother-in-law houses. And they are putting together a program where they will pre-approve 10 different designs and make the whole process easier. And that's a great way to fit more housing into existing neighborhoods and retain the community character. We have a similar program in the county. But if we could bring those two together, so those pre-approved units are also pre-approved in the county, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. The city has a much more developed housing program. How can we use that housing program and use some of the more open land that we have in the county? I, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know enough. But that's the kind of thing that I'll be looking for. Another issue that I would like to hear about, that I don't hear about, is healthcare. We recently had the biggest planning meltdown in the history of the region with the hospital. And we all know what that's all about. I don't see either the city or county addressing it directly. The city, I think, seems to think, seems to know, because of John Ruggles, bless his heart, did the research and said, you know, it's really county jurisdiction. I don't hear anything going on in the county. I don't know if anything is, but so far, I haven't heard of anything. I've sent some of you proposition, a proposal for a healthcare commission. I don't know if that's the answer. It is, it, it falls within some of the categories in the city. There's a Chapter 5, Social and Economic Systems in the existing regional plan. In the county, Community Health Needs Assessment, there is a little Community Health Needs Assessment tag in our circular, in our diagram, under the Comprehensive Plan. We are in an awkward situation with healthcare, and I don't see either the city or the county stepping forward and addressing it directly. Maybe someone is, but I read the paper, the local paper, every time it comes out. And I just don't see the communication, except occasionally I hear, "We're moving from NIH." So that's a, a, a deep and very important part of our community that I hope that we'll see some coordination between the city and county next week. Thanks.
Supervisor Horstman?
I think now more than ever, we need to have collaboration and communication with the city and the county. We are, you know, you hear this a lot, but we are in unprecedented times right now. You know, HHS alone, you know, we have the second largest geographic county in the country, one of the most diverse in terms of land and population, culture, et cetera. And we have just lost millions of dollars from Health and Human Services, which has eviscerated our mobile vaccine clinics and is going to definitely impact the services we're able to provide to our out counties. So, you know, it's, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. But this is something that is beyond the ability of local government to handle. That doesn't mean that we can't be, and we shouldn't be, we need to be talking about it. And the city and the county need to be working in partnership, because at least together, we might be able to do something more than just us working alone. But I, I think that those are things we're going to need to tackle at this retreat. In terms of housing, that's another situation where it, it can't just be local government. And I can guarantee you, we're not going to get anywhere with the federal government right now with regards to this. So, you know, that, that is a reality, and I don't know how that's going to work itself out, but it is a reality. And then we have the reality of, we all are committed to lowering our carbon footprint. We're all committed to trying to have sustainability, both in our, our housing supply and in our materials. We also live in a community that's surrounded by the largest contiguous ponderosa pine forest in the world. And that means we need to have fire-hardening materials used in our building. And guess what? Sustainability and fire-hardening materials are expensive. So we, you know, it's like, we've got all these competing interests, and we have a huge housing problem. It is affecting every part and every aspect of our community. We aren't alone. Not sure that makes me feel any better. But it's, it's, it's a problem that is being faced all across the West. And it really is a problem that needs all partners to the table. We've lost a huge partner, and that's federal government. So, you know, we're going to move forward because we have no choice but to move forward. You know, how we're able to get there, well, we got to start somewhere. We got to keep ourselves moving in the right direction. But, you know, these are, you, you need to know, and I, and I know you all do, because we work with a lot of you. You're our friends and our neighbors. And you hear us complain a lot in, in public meetings about this. But, you know, it is really difficult times, and we're going to have to be making some very difficult choices just to get by and just to maintain the services that we've got for the next year. We're about ready to go into budget. I am not looking forward to this at all. It is going to be the hardest budget I've done since I've been on this board and probably one of the hardest that's happened in, in, in our times here. one of the hardest that's happened in our times here. So it's gonna be interesting discussion. It's gonna be an interesting retreat. And I know that our colleagues on the city council are feeling the same pressures we are. And I know you all, in your communities, as well as what you do on P and Z, and in your own families, are feeling the very same thing. So please, let's keep talking. Give us your great ideas, your great input, because we're gonna need to all be together to do this. So thank you.
Supervisor Vazquez?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you bringing up the conversation about the hospital and just healthcare in general. And we do need some forward thought on what's going forward, and we need to have those conversations. But again, as my colleague just mentioned, we're about to go into a difficult budget season, so it might take a little while, but that doesn't mean that it's not important to us and that we don't want to continue those conversations, so that when the right time comes and the hospital's ready with whatever they're planning, we can be collaborating with the city and be able to help facilitate the best for our local community. So, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to make a comment? Commissioners? Okay. Thank you for all your presentations, and I think you can go ahead and probably close your comments.
Thank you very much, Chair Begay. We just had another quick mention that the regional plan, there is another survey out right now, and that is, will be available until Friday? Until Friday. And so we can forward the link to everybody, because that is drilling down further into what we heard during the Sixty-Day Public Review. So there's some important questions, and it's a fun survey to take. It doesn't take very long. There are a lot of visuals. And Sarah did want to give you just one quick mention about healthcare.
I even think perhaps the QR code is in the lobby somewhere. I think I saw our flyers out there for the regional plan. So you can, if you can find the flyer, you can just scan the QR code real quick and share the survey. And you will get the results of that survey as part of your retreat packet. So that's, we extended it. It was supposed to end today, but we, we thought we might, we would like a few more responses. We did have over one-hundred-and-twenty responses when I looked last. We just wanted to see if you all would help us maybe spread the word and get a little bit more depth and variety in the comments. So the other thing I wanted to add is, is the discussion on healthcare is not, is Commissioner Bestis correct, it's not covered in the regional plan. And there's two reasons for that. There's the fact that it really falls under the county's jurisdiction, but there's also the fact that a hospital, a standalone hospital as a use, is allowed by right in all zoning districts in the City of Flagstaff with a CUP. So, and our CUPs, unlike county CUPs, do not have regional plan conformance as one of their considerations. So it is a decision outside the scope, if a new hospital site were proposed in the City of Flagstaff, and they didn't want to rezone for some reason, they could simply apply for a CUP and nuisance issues, and those listed in the zoning code are more limited and administrative in nature. So that's, I'm sorry, I think the mic's cutting out a little, but that is an important distinction, and I think it's not commonly understood. But if you go through every zone in our zoning code, it says "hospital UP," which means "use permit," and those are considered by-right uses in the city. The county handles CUPs differently, but I think that's part of why, when we're talking about it in this joint context, it leads to some confusion. The reason the hospital, that what proposal that was overturned by voters, that zoning amendment last year, was a zoning amendment is because of the health village. They did not need a code amendment to put a hospital if it was only a hospital. It was all the other uses associated with it that required the zoning code amendment. And I can't get too far into that. I'm not the planner who handled that case, but I want to make sure that's articulated, because it's good background for all of you. I think city council and planning and zoning at the city already know that information. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to provide a little education here, so we can move, so we all have the same information when we arrive at the meeting on the second. Do you have any questions for me about that, that I can't answer? I'm not sure I can answer all of them.
I appreciate Sot's comment that, "I'd like to bring this up, but I don't have an answer," because that's really what's going on. We all know the issue. We all know the problem. And it is, what is, what is the answer to this? I don't have it either. So I am looking forward to the discussion on May 2nd regarding this.
Well, and thank you all for taking the time to discuss the agenda. If you see my paper, Melissa and I have taken notes and are going to be adjusting the agenda to cover and make sure the things we want to talk about are included and given enough time so that we can get through all the material. So thank you very much.
Again, thank you for the presentation. Alista?
Thank you very much.
And thank you, commissioners, for being here today. It means a lot. And thank you for all the work that you guys do. Like I said, it's hard, but, you know, we all get through this together. Again, it's just for our constituents. They're all the same constituents, regardless if they live in the city or within their county rural areas or whatever, you know. So we're talking about the overall county. So, and that's what our mission statement says, for all county residents. So thank you so much again. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Wait, I want to know, is Tammy bringing sandwiches for the...
Okay, but Tammy's not bringing it this time, right? Okay, okay.
Okay, moving on, on our agenda, we have item number twenty-seven.
Okay, everyone, we're moving on for Parks and Recreation, Fort Tuthill Master Plan Update. We have Liz Krug, Cynthia Nemeth and team, Nancy Wonders, Fred Sollop, Brian Blue.
Okay, we have a presentation discussion and possible action to approve the 2025 Fort Tuthill County Park Master Plan, through this update. So with that, we have Director Cynthia Nemeth. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Begay, members of the board. It is my absolute pleasure to be here this afternoon to present to you on the Fort Tuthill County Park Master Plan Update. Before I begin, I want to introduce, and I'll spend a little bit more time introducing my co-presenters today and consultants on this project, Dr. Fred Sollop and Dr. Nancy Wonders. I also want to acknowledge that we have District Three Parks and Recreation Commissioner Blue here with us this afternoon. So thank you, Mr. Commissioner Blue, for being here. And Assistant Director Liz Krug is also here joining us. For this afternoon, we want to go over the master planning process, as well as some of the key trends and the things that we heard from the public that helped us design what is going to be a roadmap for the future. And we'll talk about the process that we engaged in, the findings. We'll touch on some of the findings. They're not all in the presentation tonight or this afternoon. And then ultimately, at the very end, we're going to seek your approval of this, of this master plan and hopefully finalize it. In terms of the background, the purpose for the master plan update is to examine what new trends are out there, and we examine that by checking in on the demographics. We checked in very extensively with the public and stakeholders that utilize Fort Tuthill or have an interest in this park, as well as the adjacent land and the uses thereof. And taking all of that into consideration will help us create priorities for Fort Tuthill over the course of the next ten years. And to give you just an example, the last master plan of 2013, we followed a very extensive public process, and we learned at that time that, for example, bike park was something that our community was interested in, as well as disc golf. And those are two amenities that resulted from that plan and continue to be very popular today. It's also important to note that master plans are aspirational, okay? What you'll hear about today, what you'll read about in the plan itself, they do not obligate the agency to actually fund the recommendations or implement them. But if opportunities arise, as I like to say, if the stars all align, we'll have a decision-making tool that we can go to when it comes to Fort Tuthill County Park. And why do we master plan Fort Tuthill versus, say, Raymond Park or Cataract Lake County Park? Well, Fort Tuthill is a very high-profile park. It sees a lot of activity. We have a lot of stakeholders there. Given its location right outside of Flagstaff and the growth that we anticipate around this park, it's important that we have, like I said earlier, a roadmap, a decision-making tool that will help us when, if, and if we have the financial means to do so, it'll help us grow that park responsibly and with the knowledge that the public has spoken and providing it as their input. So it'll be reflective of our stakeholders and our users. So to help us create this master plan update, we engaged a consulting team comprised, it was Global Local Vision, who was victorious in the RFP process. And as I mentioned earlier, my co-presenters are that consulting team. And then they subcontracted with We Design Group out of Tucson. And of course, Director, Assistant Director Krug and myself, we were in lockstep with our consultant team throughout the process, which began in earnest in July, so almost a year ago. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Sollop, who will take it from here.
Thank you. Chair Wembege? Oh, is it on? Okay. We're talking about the four phases of the master plan, reviewing materials, getting information about the community, developing the master plan itself, and then reporting findings to you. That process, as I said, we came before you in June. It was adopted. In July of 2024, we started that process. We're now here at the end of the process in April 2025, and we submit a master plan for your discussion and approval today. After looking at the background documents, getting up to speed, our team reviewed over twenty documents. Once we were up to speed, we wanted to really go out and seek more information. We first looked at the literature to understand park and recreation trends throughout the nation. And we saw that certainly post-COVID, park usage was increasing. More people were going out and enjoying our parks. They were getting outside. And we saw that parks were beneficial for the physical, there were physical benefits, there were mental benefits to the health of participants. So the entities themselves, the counties, the cities were outreach to their populations to try to increase access, increase participation, given the new population that was out there and the increased demand for services. We also saw in the literature a greater attention to environmental impacts of parks themselves. And we also saw increased utilization of technology, technology both in terms of the user, the user employing technology to better understand what the park has to offer, and also the parks themselves utilizing technology for a better understanding of the participant, what people are doing in the parks. So technology is an important trend in the park literature. After understanding the trends, we honed in on Kaukanino County to look at the tenure demographic trends taking place. That we understood that the county population is increasing, so an increasing population would be more demand for services, certainly in parks and recreation. The population has become more diverse over the last ten years. There's a smaller family size, and yet a higher average age, the average age of the population is increasing over time. A higher disability rate, this was important in terms of understanding people's, the way people utilize the park, a higher disability rate than ten years ago in terms of audio disabilities or mobility disabilities, visual disabilities, lower poverty rates, poverty rate has become lower over the last ten years, and higher rates of public engagement. We have a public that goes out, that enjoys the park, but also understands the issues and wants to participate on the issues. And with that, I'll turn the podium over to my colleague, Dr. Wonders.
Hello, and thanks for attending to this report today, where we are excited to present it to you. I'm gonna talk a little bit today about the community engagement piece and how we went about getting the feedback from the community that we got. It was a great privilege to go and talk to the public about this park. It is an absolutely beloved park. I'm gonna say that more than once today, because we heard it from everyone. The very first thing we did is come before you, the Board of Supervisors, and talk to you about our plan for gathering public input. And we heard your comments, I hope are, the feedback you gave to us, I hope you'll see reflected in the kind of outreach we engage in, which did go well beyond Flagstaff. That was one of the comments that we had received. The Parks and Recreation Commission also was very helpful in helping to guide initial planning and things that we might consider. And then the Fort Tuthill County Park staff has been invaluable. They gave us a detailed tour. We've met with them many times, and often are very, very, have been very, very helpful for talking about the very pragmatic concerns that we would confront as we consider different options that the public is suggesting. The way that we went about getting community engagement included a survey. That survey was very successful. We had five hundred and seventy responses, which is actually really remarkable, given that it was only open for about a month. And it was voluntary, so there were no incentives provided. People participated because they have an interest in the park. And I would mention that over half of those responses were from outside of Flagstaff, more than five miles outside of Flagstaff. Some could be much farther than five miles away. I'm just saying, the majority were not Flagstaff. We held three stakeholder meetings. This stakeholder list came from a list provided initially by the Parks and Recreation Director, and forty-six people on that list were invited, forty-six groups, I should say. There were groups and organizations, not individuals. In fact, when we invited them, we always asked, "If you are not able to attend, please send a representative." And many groups did that. Also, if they could not attend, they were given a couple of other options for dates they could attend. In the end, fifteen groups and organizations participated. And I should mention that, and I'll talk about this in just a moment, but these are, these were very detailed meetings. They were ninety-minute meetings. It wasn't a small commitment to make. It was a very big commitment, and very rich information was obtained from those stakeholders. I'll talk more about who they were in just a moment. And then we also held a community meeting. This was just open to the general public, and twenty-two individuals attended that meeting. That was, ran about an hour, hour and a half, and was a very wide, open discussion. We presented some ideas, but also gave people an opportunity to express their ideas about what they would like. And then we held two design open houses at the Flagstaff Public Library. This was led by our Tucson We Design Group. They had concept designs, two concept designs they presented, and the public was able to comment and give feedback on those. And a couple of you, I know supervisors, attended, and we really... know supervisors, attended and really appreciated that input as well, so you have some hands-on understanding of what it was we were doing there. If we talk about who the stakeholders were, you'll see that it was a wide range of vested interests and heavy users of the park. These also were, there were also organizations and groups that we viewed as important representatives of groups and communities that we needed to do specific outreach to, and I'm not going to go through this detail here, except to say that it's public-private partners, event and recreation facility user groups, government agencies that have connection or interest in the park, specific interests, and then some various community organizations. We do provide in the report and the appendix the full list of stakeholders so that you can review those. We also, when we want to, we want to share with you that in our outreach strategy for the online survey, the community meeting, and the open houses, we really saw a very wide advertisement across the county, we advertised to organizations, and these were like all kinds of organizations, fire districts, utilities, nonprofits, vendors, cultural advisor groups. Again, if you, if you look at the list we provided, you'll see it's very robust, very diverse, 28 organizations were in Flagstaff, 56 other organizations across the county were also contacted. These groups were encouraged to post this information, share this information on their websites, invite people to attend these many different opportunities to provide out engagement. And we know just from lists that we maintained that there was not a tremendous amount of overlap, so these, we believe, were unique groups and individuals who participated for the most part. We also promoted the information through the county press releases, public service announcements, social media, newsletters, websites, flyers, and emails. Elected officials also distributed that information to constituents, and we appreciate that you assisted with that process, we saw that that was occurring. To our knowledge, at least 702 people participated, and that is very good for the window of opportunity that we had available for public comment, we find that to be, we were very pleased, we thought it was, again, very robust and diverse participation, and we think that it also, I would just say, it also reflects the kind of interest that exists with respect to Fort Tuthill County Park. We felt like people wanted to come out, they wanted to have their views heard because they care so much about the park. What I want to do next is just talk about some of the key recommendations. This is a partial list, as Director Nemeth has emphasized, and, but we do want to draw attention to some of the things that were said, some of the things that have been captured in the conceptual design that you'll see in front of you and that is contained in the report. The report will have some other information well beyond this. As I said, Fort Tuthill County Park unanimously overwhelmingly is a highly valued park, people love it, they said, please, please keep it as it is, don't do things that would, you know, reduce or make it smaller, or reduce especially the natural areas, they really wanted the natural areas preserved, particularly the trail systems that allow for access to nature. And so that was something we heard from every group that we spoke with. They also felt that because they loved what exists in the park so much, they wanted to ensure that we maintain and upgrade the buildings that exist and the infrastructure that exists. So they know that's costly, they wanted that to be kind of put high on the list of things to attend to, and in the report, you'll see attention devoted to that, discussing how to make sure infrastructure is, for example, sustainable into the future. So I wanted to make sure those two things were heavily emphasized since from all parties we heard that very clearly. As far as other suggestions, I'm going to try to capture what the design team argued, really captured a bunch of the different suggestions made, and so they took it and they tried to put it into kind of a picture format in this conceptual design, into something they're calling the heart of the park. The heart of the park captures many of the suggestions that were made by those that we spoke to. What people really sought and thought about was the need for more of a sense of places of community, a kind of public plaza that might exist within the park that would allow for a celebration of history, culture, and community, that this is something that more and more, in terms, since the pandemic, people are seeking in a park, and it's harder to find in Fort Tuthill, but this idea of the heart of the park seeks to create that. And so Assistant Director Krug is pointing out where the heart of the park would be, it's just adjacent to the traditional Fort Tuthill grounds, and it would be a place where the, right now, there's a road there, that road would be made more limited use for emergency vehicles and for the park to manage, but typically, it would be a pedestrian promenade that would allow for better pedestrian traffic flow through the center of the park. It would also be an event space, you could imagine vendors there, you could imagine cultural events, some had talked about the desire for things like powwows or cultural fairs to take place, there, this would be a space for such a thing to occur. Also, it would be a place for history markers to be put in place, to tell the story of the area and the peoples and cultures who lived here, they might rotate, it could also be a place for public art. Another feature that would be integrated and that was desired was a more interactive and nature-focused play area, you might think of it as a playground, but we're not talking about metal structures, we're talking about very natural elements, big logs that people can, that children and even adults could climb on. Many parks have moved in this direction, and it creates a centerpiece of nature that features the nature, adds to it rather than taking away. This also could be an event space that could potentially be a rental area adjacent to the, I always forget the name of the building, pardon me, the commercial building, adjacent to the commercial building, which always, already is something that can be rented. And then another set of additions that are reflected in the map are new pickleball courts, this was something we heard from many in our community, also another playground is added eventually into the park, remote controlled vehicle area, radio-controlled vehicle area was a high-demand item and easy for the park to implement, it's a small area that would be kind of at a distance from that heart of the park area. And then a new welcome kiosk would also be added. If you think about entering Fort Tuthill right now, it's a little bit confusing if you don't know that park, where you should go, what it offers, the welcome kiosk would not be staffed, but it would be a place early on, as you enter the park, that you could stop, get good information, perhaps eventually something like a QR code, you could find out what the options are, where we go to park, and so we're hoping that would reduce some of the confused driving around that circle that happens. Also, three new restaurants are proposed, three new, and six new ramadas over time, these were, again, very high demand, six, three new restrooms, six new ramadas. Yeah. And, oh, there is, there is a vendor idea, I'm sorry, I said restaurant, yeah, there is a restaurant, a restaurant idea, which is a place for hookup for food trucks, but no restaurant, yes, you're right. There is also a new multi-use building that is proposed, this is another potential revenue generator, which is fantastic, it would also serve for 4H, and during the county fair, what's useful about that is that's something that has to be paid for to have a big tent out there, so this commercial building, this large multi-use building, the hope is it might even have a kitchen so that it could swing into an event space when not in use by 4H, it'll probably just have a concrete floor, it could also be an indoor vending space or event space for other kinds of commercial activities. That is very near the historic grounds as well. And then we also re-envisioned the equestrian and racetrack areas, many commented on how underutilized and unused some of those areas were, but others said, yes, but parts of it, we really want to keep and preserve. One of the high-demand items was better parking, especially for large events, it's rather confusing to know where to go for those who have to manage the parking, they really needed a much larger lot, especially for those large events, which do bring a lot of revenue to the park. And so the thought was that since people really didn't want to clear more trees from Fort Tuthill, to take a portion of the racetrack, it is already being used from time to time as a swing area for parking, to take that and make that parking, and so you'll see that on the map as well, and then to consolidate the equestrian area so that they have more of an entrance into that and that they are just clear parking for those who are there to use those areas and facilities. Final suggestions within the map, within the concept map that you'll see are improved suggestions for better traffic flow, some of the paths and trails have been slightly rerouted for safety reasons, and there's also a suggestion within the final report for improved signage, there's already a signage plan, and the idea is just to be sure that that gets implemented. There are some other suggestions in the plan that can't be really drawn on a map, and I would just draw your attention to a couple of these, there is definitely enthusiasm for public-private partnerships, there's a recognition that they do a lot for helping to finance important amenities that exist out at the park, and there's a desire to grow those partnerships and for some of those to expand, a good example is the campground and the amphitheater, those came up, but many people suggested expansions of those. Another kind of public, another kind of partnership that's been very useful and important have been public nonprofit partnerships, I would say, this is when an organization like the Flagstaff Biking Organization says, we would need, we would love a bike park out there, and, and the park says, okay, that's a good idea, that came out of the last master plan, and they said, we'll even help to build it and maintain it. So when a group steps forward and provides that kind of labor and service and ongoing commitment, that is a wonderful partnership, we recognize that, many talked about that, and we continue to recommend that for the future. I'm going to leave it there, but I will say again, there are many other recommendations in the park, it is a much-loved park, people do want to see the natural areas preserved, but do have many good suggestions that can aid planning, should resources be available for Fort Tuthill. Again, it's been a privilege to hear the public, the public's view of this, and it's a pleasure to bring those, that feedback to you.
We have the heart of the park, we have the master plan maps, which we've seen. Director Nemeth mentioned that this was an aspirational plan, and we're presenting to you also an aspirational budget. We budgeted out everything in the recommendations, and the total price tag was just under $45 million. We then phased that out, again, aspirational, we then phased that out and present the phased budget to you in the master plan as well. Very broadly, in phase one, we're going for some high-demand items, some low-budget items, some lower-cost items, yet high-demand items, high-demand like pickleball courts in phase one, but low-cost items such as creating the radio-controlled vehicle area or the transit drop-off area. In phase two, we moved toward the heart of the park, and that's the full build-out with the playground, for instance, that Dr. Wonders had talked about, landscaping, aligning Soldier's Trail, and also the welcome kiosk that Dr. Wonders had mentioned. Phase three, we talk about the full build-out of the equestrian areas, and we're also going to add, we add two ramadas in there and renovation of historic structures. Phase four is the final aspects of the plan, that's the building of the multipurpose building and the quad, parking and some fencing around the park. Again, this is an aspirational phasing of the aspirational plan, double aspirations here, and we know that it's been a pleasure working with Director Nemeth, Assistant Director Krug, Commissioner Blue, and many others with all you on this plan, and we know that the park is in good hands, and depending upon opportunities that emerge, depending upon economics, the future of the economy in the county, we understand that different parts of this plan will get implemented at different times, and we leave it in your good hands to make those final decisions. We are here for discussion and questions and anything else.
Any board wish to make any comments? Supervisor Antoinette.
I'm just going to say thanks again for the presentation, I am really glad, though, that I had a one-on-one with you guys to sit down and hear it, you know, maybe a little more informally, where, and all of my questions, I don't have any questions right now, because I asked all of the questions that I had at that meeting. So I feel coming into this meeting today that I had a really good understanding of what was going on, but I just want to thank you for coming and re-presenting again. So I'd love to hear my thoughts and comments from my other supervisors.
Supervisor Horstman.
I do have some comments, but before I have them, I'd love to hear from Commissioner Blue if he has any kind of comments on working on this whole concept with the commission, Parks and Rec Commission, no? Oh, come on.
And before Commissioner Blue comes up, I will say that at our April meeting, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of this plan with a few modifications that we did bring forward to you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. A couple of things, one is the outreach process of all of this is absolutely incredible, and the participation of the community is absolutely incredible. I've been on many master plans, and we've had more participation in this than I think any plan that I've ever participated in myself, which just speaks to the popularity of it. Second is that the park is being maintained in its current personality, which is, I think, key, everybody loves Fort Tuthill because it's Fort Tuthill, we don't want to go in and bulldoze the whole place and reinvent it, we're just trying to enhance it. So I think the representation of this plan speaks to that. A park and public spaces define community. Fort Tuthill defines our community, and we cannot let budget constraints, and I appreciate the comments that were made by the, by the commission earlier, this is going to be the toughest budget you guys ever go through, but you can't deny planning and vision, you've got to hold on to that so that 10 years, 20 years from now, we can have the community that we have today and that we want for tomorrow. So you can't let budget constraints. Excuse me, my hearing aids are speaking to me right at the moment. Partnerships are absolutely primary in this park, they've been demonstrated time and time again, we're working on partnerships with, with the campground, which I've long thought has been terribly underdeveloped and underutilized, and is a fundraiser, a sustainable source of income, so that stands outside of this particular plan, but we are working with an outside vendor to develop that. So I just ask you, do not be afraid of the $45 million, just, just vision what we can can, and then as opportunity presents itself in the future, we don't know what the future is going to bring, it is, it is far more uncertain today than I think it's ever been, but we still have to plan and vision, so thank you very much.
Supervisor Horstman.
Thank you, and thanks for your input and your service on Parks and Rec, you guys have really done a great job and really good service for our community, so thank you with that. I want to make just a couple of points on this, I really appreciate your efforts, and of course, Parks and Rec, you guys, Cynthia, you and your team, you know, you and Liz really have always hit it out of the park, so to speak, and I really appreciate that. And of course, you know, I do think we are so fortunate to have Fort Tuthill, it is a really incredible asset for us here in Coconino County, and it's well-loved and well-used, and yet I think it can be loved more and used more, and I think the plans that you're coming up with are excellent. I'll try again, and I think it's excellent, I really like the heart of the park idea, by the way, and really added to the use, and I think as we go forward, the welcoming welcome kiosk, which could also be another fabulous place to provide information to the community, as well as our visitors that come up on, on fire and, and on fire safety and lots of things, so I'm really excited about that as well. I do think that we do need to look, I would love to move forward on this because I think the park is a great revenue producer as well. I'm very happy to hear that you're looking at ways, and we are too, to expand the amphitheater and our public-private partnership, as well as the RV park. I just, I mean, I have a little 19-foot trailer, and so I travel around, and I see what people are able to do with their little RV parks, community RV parks, and how much they're making from these, so I'm really glad you're taking a look at that. And I think we do need to look at ways to increase our public-private partnership and revenue production here at Fort Tuthill. One other thing that I think, when we talked about it a little bit before, you know, when we talked about healthcare, we thought at one time there we talked about healthcare, we thought at one time there may be a, a large, not only hospital, but really a hospital, a commercial development out. And one of the things that made me so uncomfortable about it was the fact that it was going to literally, literally surround Fort Tuthill. Almost like it'd be this, this huge fence around it. And so I am hopeful that all of us will be looking at people who believe in community and maybe building their, their legacy and their family's legacy and the possibility of adding to this park to help to protect it. You know, whether there's a hospital going on there or not, it is going to be developed. And to the extent that we can, and we don't have the money for it, but to the extent that we can gain hopefully from some, the largesse of some folks who have property out there and really want to create a legacy for our community and a legacy for their family, we welcome your property. It's like cars for kids, maybe we should come up with a little jingle. But anyway, it's true that it would be great to try to expand some of the boundaries to be able to have a little bit of a buffer, if you will, because it is such an incredible asset. It's being used and loved even more than ever and it will be in the future too, as Flagstaff grows, as our tourism grows, as we look at Parks and Rec as part of our economic development, as that grows, you know, we're going to see even more use out there. So really appreciate this. I'm excited to talk about this as we move forward. I'm excited to look at some great ways that we can bring revenue back into the park for some of these capital projects, because I'd really like to see that. I think the more we invest, it's kind of like our house. The more we invest in our house, we're going to get it back, right? And I feel that a lot about our, our park here as well. So anyway, thank you and thank you all for your work on this.
Supervisor Oskas.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I was wondering, where's the soccer fields? Just kidding. No, I really like what you're looking to do with Fort Tuthill and I just put that plug for soccer fields because I know we're looking for a place in the county. However, Fort Tuthill is probably not the place for it. I do appreciate all the things that you're proposing. I really like the idea of utilizing the space of the entrance to the park and upgrading that and adding some amenities. I think that'll be really good. And I, what I really like about this plan is the fact that, as was mentioned, we don't have the funding for it right now, but by having the vision and the plan, when those funding opportunities arise, we'll be ready, you know? And, and in particular, those private partner, public partnerships, I think there's some great opportunities and we just need to keep, keep grinding, keep putting together our plans and be persistent and it'll come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to make a comment. I think that, you know, the plan is good and I, I feel that, you know, a lot of these activities really go to the, the local areas. They're, in fact, you know, they call it Flagstaff Park out on the reservation, other areas, because they don't have access to anything really, maybe some biking, just, just certain people. But I think I did mention this to you guys, that, you know, I think we need a real, a somewhat big multipurpose room where we can have, you know, the outer people utilize, you know, this park and mainly like for our kids, our, we, we tell our kids, we say the kids are our future. We have nothing on the reservation where they can have tournaments and the schools are being used and sometimes they get turned away. And with all the things that are happening around now with drugs and alcohol, everything, we try to keep our kids, you know, busy every weekend or even during the week. We have no place to go. And so even with, you know, like for, I mean, I know that the veterans have a hard time finding places to do things too, like, you know, getting together, doing powwows to make money and to be there with one another. We have vendors that sell all sorts of jewelry and they can't even take it anywhere. They go away out, out of nowhere with a shack. They sit underneath there, rain or shine, trying to make money. We're not thinking about all of those people out there. And so I'm just kind of thinking, there's a lot of money that you can make out of this, you know, through, through utilizing, having everybody use across the, as our mission states, you know, for all county residents. And I feel personally that it, you know, we, it's not, it's not that. And I hate to say that because I see it. And if that multipurpose room is going to be in there, I am for it because that will really bring economic development, country western dances. I mean, we're in a total different area and we do things differently than, you know, what's being done at the park right now. And so I think, you know, if we're going to think about all the county people then, we got to make some changes. So, you know, and, and multipurpose building is one of the biggies, I think that can happen where our kids, I mean, these parents of little kids that play basketball, five, six-year-old, seven-year-old, nine-year-old, 10-year-old, they pay $15, $20 a shot, just to go in and watch games. And their whole family comes, I mean, you can easily make a lot of money with that, but we just don't have that. You know, we don't, we can't do that out there on the reservation because there's, there's nothing out there. I mean, people may think, well, the tribe has money, how come they can't do anything with it? You know, I, but to me, you know, I, I feel that, you know, at the first time I came here to be a board member, when I felt that the mission statement was read and said for all county residents, these are the things that was running through my mind. And I did make a statement, you know, and tell that thing is, I think we need to change the mission statement if we have to, you know, because it's not serving everybody throughout the whole county. So I just, this is just something I want to get off my chest and, you know, because we do things differently and we look at things differently. We make money, you know, and it's just, it's so totally different. We don't have bikes. Our kids only have bikes. And, you know, things that they can do over there, they may have volleyball outside, but they can do that. We have a lot of volleyball players that are very successful. Flag High has a good team, but they're fortunate because they live here in town, most of them. So I, I think we really, really need to thought, think in those terms, you know, addressing, you know, and, and making sure that, you know, we're, we're standing by our mission statement, saying for all county residents. So I am support. I'm glad this is being done. It's got to be done because the restrooms need upgrades, you know, because I've been there. Some people are fortunate to go there, but a lot of our reservation people can't. So anyway, I just, I, I would appreciate it if the multi-use building would accommodate a lot of that so that, you know, nobody is left out. It's all, it's all, that's all we need is a place to take our kids. So that's, that's what I want to say. So thank you so much for working on this and it means a lot to me, you know, that we're helping and we're, we're out there and, you know, we're, we're trying to accommodate everybody. So I just want to say thank you again Cynthia for your, your leadership and putting this whole thing together and trying to, you know, work things out. But I think we were going the right direction and thank you for putting the multipurpose room on there, I mean, building, because I think that would mean a lot to everybody within the county. Everybody's always looking for some event. I mean, we pay money just to go do something together and we come by a lot of people. Lot of us could show up at games, volleyball games, you know, we, we, we're very supportive of our little ones, you know, not only those, but there's other sports too. I just want to say thank you so much, all you, and then my colleagues too. Thank you for listening me out. I, I think it's about time I said something again, you know, but that's just me. So thank you so much.
Go ahead supervisor.
Thank you Chair Begay. A couple of things. I very much agree with Commissioner Blue's statement, which is, well, we've got a lot of aspiration going on here. We have aspiration idea and we have aspiration in budget, which I, I did chuckle out loud, $45 million, okay? But I also, but Commissioner Blue made a good point that we have to have vision because without vision, we're going to fail. Okay? And to Supervisor Begay's comments, when I was meeting with you guys, I, I actually brought up the fact of having tournaments, how I had heard from some of my Native American vendors, that this was something that they truly, that they're driving to Phoenix, they're, they're actually going out of state to go to this. So I know that this is the plan we have now. I think it is a good plan, but I do think that she makes a good point and it was one that I made at the private meeting that we had amongst ourselves. So, and I didn't even know that she felt that way. So I just kind of wanted to underscore that. And quick question, and this is just curiosity on my part, but you said the majority of the comments that you got back were not from the city of Flagstaff. Can you tell us where those came from? Where those comments came from?
Certainly. The reference that Dr. Wonders made was with the survey, that 570 responses, 55% of those were further than five miles away from the park. So they were outside of the Flagstaff, immediate Flagstaff city boundaries. But we also did extensive outreach for every event and we had a, an email list of organizations that represent the different interests in the county. The majority of those organizations are outside of Flagstaff, so they're countywide, but outside of Flagstaff and we provide a full list of those organizations in the appendix to the report.
Okay, thank you. I, I just find that very interesting. The interest in this park, it far exceeds the city of Flagstaff. This truly is a county park. So, okay, thank you. And I do, I'll, I'll just leave my comments there, but thank you for the work and I think that this is a good plan and thank you.
Well, before you place your vote, I just want to thank you Chair Begay for your comments and all of the board members for your, for your comments to this afternoon. Much, much appreciated.
Soccer fields would be revenue generating, just saying.
Okay. So, so this item was brought before us to possibly do, accept them, accept the, the plan. Is there a motion to do so?
Chair Begay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the 2025 Fort Tuthill County Park Master Plan.
Okay. Motion made by Supervisor Ontoir. Is there a second?
I would be happy to second that and I know it'll be an ongoing and continuing discussion as we move forward to implement this. So it's my pleasure to second it.
Motion's been made, a second by Supervisor Horstman. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations. I'd like to have a five-minute break or so if we can. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much, everyone. We had some good discussions. Next, we have an item here as a discussion item, and this is presentation discussion regarding the Coconut County Library Bookmobile, County Manager.
Thank you Chair Begay, members of the board, and we have with us our partners from both the library and the City of Flagstaff and the City of Flagstaff Public Library. This is a presentation, and we want, if you'll recall at the budget conversation last year, we talked about the bookmobile and two times. And so we, the team has done a great job of getting the bookmobile operational. And as we prepare for the future of that bookmobile, wanted to present to you, the Board of Supervisors, who also served during as budget capacity, the Library District Board of Directors, some thoughts about the future of the bookmobile, some options as we prepare for our budget discussions upcoming in May. So with that, I'll present, I will ask Linda to take the podium, Linda Tilson, and thank you.
I saw someone turn it off, so I was like, okay, take note of that. Good afternoon, Chair Begay and Supervisors. Thanks for letting us come and talk with you about some of the options for bookmobile service. I want to apologize that we weren't able to bring the bookmobile. The initial plan was to bring it and let you tour it, but it's having a little problem right now. It's going into neutral unexpectedly. And I did want to point out that we have our bookmobile librarian here. Rebecca Wills is, she's in very colorful clothes. So yeah, she let us know that it was really important to get it into the shop. So sorry about that. Maybe we can arrange another time. So just by way of background, the bookmobile essentially, under the current model, is a very large bus that really does serve as a traveling library for those communities that do not have libraries. And so that's the current model that we have, but I'm going to run through some other options. Maybe if I put this down further. I'm not very tall. Is that good? Okay. The bookmobile began running in 1996, and you can see from the slide that it's been around for a while. It was not running during COVID. And we just really got it back to service in 2025. And so there's been a lot of excitement about having it back up and running. And we have some nice statistics here. Back during regular times in fiscal year 2019, 400 stops and 14,000 miles. I think everyone here understands how large this county is, so a lot of miles on that. And the bookmobile itself is about 20 years old, so hence the repair today. So we wanted to share with you a photo of what we currently have in terms of a bookmobile. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see it around town, but I have definitely heard from people, "I saw the bookmobile," or "I didn't know you had a bookmobile." So there's even excitement around town, and it does visit some places in town where it, for people who are not able to get to the library very easily, as well as serving the remote areas in the county. So this first slide has a lot of statistics on the current bookmobile. As you can see, it's quite large. It does require a CDL to drive it. So props to Rebecca for working on and getting her CDL and driving this big bus. However, in the future, we want to get away from requiring a CDL. We want to go a little smaller and have something that is more well-suited to the remote areas it goes to. So there are a couple of options, and we wanted to come and get a read from this group on the type of service model you would like to see us pursue. This one is a little smaller than the existing one, 24 feet versus 36 feet, but still larger and with a collection that is close to the same size, not quite as large as the current one. And I'm not going to read to you everything on there because I figure you can see the comparison items. The other option is to go to more of a courier or delivery service type of a model where we've got a small, browsable collection, and we're interested in getting people to order items that they want and just be delivering rather than trying to have a larger browsing collection. So those are, those are pretty different service models, and that's why we wanted to come to this group is to just kind of get your feelings on that. I think I've already covered some of these items. The larger M2 vehicle has a larger collection. It's more the style of service that we're providing with the bigger bus. And then the smaller F-550 or F-600 doesn't have quite as large of a collection, but it has four-wheel drive. And so those are, those are the options, all of them. The options that we've listed here have the benefits that are listed in the bullet points. You see no CDL, I've already mentioned. We've worked with the Flagstaff Fleet Manager, and he's comfortable with any of the vehicles that we've selected. And he's really tired of repairing the old bookmobile, I might add. But anyway, he has a really good understanding of what's needed and what kind of service we're providing, and also, you know, what has not worked well in the past. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we'd just like to hear your thoughts.
Supervisor Waskus?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the two options. I missed, what was the price on the first option? I saw the second one was about $400,000, but what was the price for the first option?
Right around $550.
About $550?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So it's more in, we didn't bring the budget options and ways that we might approach funding, but Amelia's working on some different scenarios that could be discussed for either of the vehicles during our budget discussion.
Okay, thank you. I'll just give you my feedback. I appreciate that the second one gives you some more options getting to further rural areas, but I kind of like the first option better for me personally in terms of which service model to use. So, thank you.
Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and thank you. And I'm sorry, we didn't get to see the bookmobile. It is exciting when you see it driving down the street, so. You know, a couple of my thoughts on this, and we have really talked about the bookmobile the last two budget sessions because we really do need to get a new bookmobile. And the fact that you've been able to limp that one along for 20 years, and unfortunately that there was such a, you know, interruption of service for so many years because of, well, we had COVID, but also the age of that vehicle. You know, it was interesting when we talked about it, I don't know when, and I really learned a lot from Supervisor Fowler's comments about when seeing the bookmobile come out to some of the rural areas and that there were days that they were coming out, and it was, it was like a big deal. And people are marking it on their calendars and making sure they were there, and it was somewhat of a little celebration that the bookmobile was coming out. And I think that's what it offers to so many of our very isolated rural communities. And so because of that, I kind of like the first, the M2 bookmobile option as well. It's got a, it still is like a bookmobile. It's still something that, you know, you can get into, you can look at, you get to browse, and it has that feel of a more of a mobile library. And I like that and think that's exciting for communities and kids. Then the F-50 or the F-550 or F-600, which does look more like they're delivering furniture to your home. So I like the idea of the bookmobile looking like a bookmobile and getting communities and people excited and excited about reading and, and, you know, excited about you being there. So I like the idea of the M2 bookmobile. And I know some of the concerns we've had and discussions that we've had in the past is that our relationship, the city-county library relationship, is such a hybrid. And it's, and I think we got to untangle who's on first, who's doing what. And because we all have an interest in making sure that we're able to serve our out communities, and the bookmobile is one way to do that. And I very much like to see a bookmobile moving again and out there and serving some of our isolated rural communities. And I do like the idea of a bookmobile looking like the bookmobile. So that's my two cents.
Supervisor Ontiveras? Okay, I've never engaged in the bookmobile conversation before, okay? So I would like to ask a couple of questions. Number one, I don't fully understand the use. You guys are the ones that get in it, right? And take it out there to the communities. What do you feel the use, okay, so we're really picking between M2 and the F-550. There's about $150,000 difference between these two. Do you feel that the F-550 would, even though, if nothing else, we are honest, as Vice Chair Horstman said, look like you're going to be getting your furniture delivered, okay? So with that, does it serve the purpose? Like, I'm trying to figure out what really serves the purpose because I've not been out there in these communities, and no. It doesn't look to me like it's really going to offer browsing opportunity. It's more of a delivery. You call in and order, and we deliver.
It does have a small browsing collection, but they're really just slightly different service models. And the reason we looked at also a larger one, the M2, is we were keeping in mind the expectation of the users, which are used to a gargantuan one. And so that seems like a fairly big step to take. However, the smaller one is easier for staff to drive. It has the four-wheel drive. We could put four-wheel drive on the M2, but the fleet manager does not recommend that. So those are some of the upsides of the F-550 and F-600 versus the M2, the larger one.
Which one do you prefer? I know you're asking the board, and I don't mean to be answering your question with a question, but which, but I am, and I'll self-admittedly say that. But which one, you guys, I consider you guys the bookmobile experts, the ones that get out there. You know who the audience is. And I guess that's the point, is I don't know who the audience is here. And I'm wondering, what do you guys think is the better choice, and why?
Well, like I say, I think they both have benefits from the perspective of the person driving it. I imagine driving the smaller one is easier. And so that's a consideration. And we have different opinions on the library staff of which one better serves, which is one of the reasons we really wanted to talk to you, since this really serves a lot of your constituents, and talk about the different possible service models. I mean, Linda Tilson personally, as a consumer of the bookmobile services, when I lived on the Hopi Indian Reservation when I was very small, probably prefers the larger one because it's more of a splash, as was spoken to. But that doesn't mean we can't provide a good service with the smaller one. It's still, it's way better than the book vending machines that were discussed as a replacement for bookmobile services, for sure.
Okay, so then the real difference between the M2 and the F-550 really is the browsing ability. It's really the inventory, the amount of inventory that can be carried, right? Okay, but easier to drive. County Manager, did I see you raising your hand?
I don't mean to interrupt Supervisor Ontiveras, but both meet, it's really difficult to, if you're putting out a job specification, a librarian with a CDL is very hard to come by, right, Linda? And so both of these options really meet the needs. But there's still risk involved with driving it. They're both larger vehicles, and, but we really wanted to target that as well. Might be a reason we weren't able to operate the bookmobile for quite some time. It's just finding someone that could operate it that had a CDL that was willing to. You don't need a CDL for either of these options. The current one, you do. Yeah. So both, so both options meet that need, and we were really trying to target options that didn't, that would not require a CDL to operate. And then I think you hit it in terms of the considerations. It's really the browsing options and that big splash, as Linda had said, versus one that's four-wheel drive and maybe a bit easier to navigate and operate.
And do you take this out? I mean, if it's four-wheel drive, do you take it to areas that require and need four-wheel drive? You do. Okay, so then that makes a huge difference to me because the M2, like I'm seeing heads nodding behind you, but the M2 does not have that, and you guys were advised not to put it on.
Yeah, I think that the way we work with that and what our fleet services manager suggested is, I mean, you don't go out if it's a bad situation. I mean, if the weather is going to be a big factor. In fact, the library I came from before I came here doesn't even offer bookmobile service in the winter, even though they have the four-wheel drive to certain areas just because of the risk. So that's how you manage that. But as far as having it, if you did get into a situation where you needed it, I mean, it would be nice to have the four-wheel drive, sure, for sure.
Okay, so I think, I know I've heard my other two supervisors' comments, and I don't necessarily disagree with them. I tend to be very practical, though. And, well, no! I was not, I was neither inferring nor implying anything with that comment, okay? And, and so what, I think where I'm at on this, because I know that this goes to rural areas, and I know that you guys get out there, and I know that if there's kids there, wintertime is sometimes the darkest and dreariest season, and this bookmobile, I don't care how it looks, if it was a Volkswagen bug pulling up, it's going to be, it's going to be the highlight of their day. I honestly think, this is just me, but based on what you have said, I think I would take the F-550 or the F-600. Number one, because it has, I consider it more versatile. Yes, it's not as big, it doesn't look as splashy, but I think with really good doesn't look as, as splashy. But I think with really good graphics on, on the back of it, I think it, I think it can be pretty splashy. Okay. I think it can be made to look pretty darn good. And so with that, you're asking my opinion, and that's what it is. So I'll just leave it there.
Yeah, I, I guess the only thing I would say to that is if we know that four-wheel drive is going to be required, we're likely not going to send the bookmobile, though. If we know that ahead of time, just because then there is risk and we don't want to risk staff.
Okay. So you don't use the boogie, you don't use the four-wheel drive solely for inclement weather. I was thinking you may be using it out in real, really rural areas where it would be advantageous as well.
Um, I, I wouldn't.
She's nodding her head behind.
I wouldn't want to send staff if we know it's a big snowstorm, even if there is four-wheel drive, just because even with four-wheel drive, as my dad learned with his first blazer, you can get ice centered.
Yeah.
So.
Right. And, and, and I guess, I guess the point I'm making is, is that not just inclement weather, like four-wheel drives are not just used in inclement weather. They're used in rough terrain.
Right.
And that's, that's the point I'm making. Do you guys go to areas that require four-wheel drive rural enough to need to have four-wheel drive, not in inclement weather, but just rough terrain?
Well, the bookmobile that we have now is, is going to those areas and it's essentially a, I don't know, glorified city bus.
Okay. Okay. So, so it's able to get where you need to go. Okay.
Yeah, although it has some issues with overheating during the warmer months.
Okay.
When going up big hills and things.
Okay. All right. Well, if you're not gonna, well, so then the four-wheel drive aspect really doesn't even matter because if you have four-wheel drive, you're not going to send it out in inclement weather anyway, so it wouldn't matter.
It would matter if a situation occurred where you were out on a dirt road that, but I don't think that's going to be often, that you're out there and suddenly there's a deluge. So I'm not saying it can occur.
Right.
But we're not gonna knowingly send someone out in a snowstorm, even with four-wheel drive.
Okay, of course. Well, okay, then with that, um, if that's not really that big of an issue, I like M2 because it does offer, it does offer more than what the F-550. But I'm going to be really honest with you, either one of these would work for me.
Thank you.
Supervisor Voskas?
Yes. Are there any communities where the mobile clinic would go where you can't go without four-by-four or without four-wheel drive?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I don't think we have to put it in four-wheel to get to any of our current stops. Yeah.
Because of the current bookmobile, I haven't done full research on where we could go that we can't currently. But the nature of the area out there is such that I think there are more places we could go with the, with the F-550 option. And there are all kinds of times with the bus now where it would be much better to have four-wheel drive and a smaller vehicle and a, and a shorter vehicle because the wind is one of the major things that keeps us from getting to routes right now during times when otherwise inclement weather wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue.
No, thank you. That's important because while the, the bigger option, you know, you always want to go bigger, there might be some advantages and open up some areas that we currently don't service, that we could service if we went with the smaller option. So I'd appreciate it if you could look into that and see what kind of proposals you'd put out there for potential new spots if we went with the smaller option. Thank you.
Supervisor Horstman?
You know, you can always get music to add to the smaller, no, just kidding. But maybe a little ice cream sound to go with it. The other, though, is, you know, I like the idea of being able to get into something with the kids. I think that's really exciting. Having said that, the practical side of me says that, you know, we want something that is, and, and by the way, as I said, I drive a trailer every now and then, so I understand about the whole idea of traveling, et cetera. I would really like to hear from more of your staff because ultimately, quite frankly, you know, you all are the ones that know where you're going. You're knowing what the population's like. You're knowing what your needs are out there. I've certainly traveled out on, on tribal lands for a really long time. And there can be a road that's just perfect one day and the next day it's so filled with mud and ruts, it's impassable, whether it's a four-wheel drive vehicle or not, quite frankly. So, but I think we need to hear from you. I mean, I, I really mean that. I mean, obviously, we know where you stand on it, but it sounds like it's split. And, uh, you know, I also see the advantage of, one of the ideas of a bookmobile is not a delivery service. It's to be a bookmobile. And so, you know, I want to hear from the staff why, what, how they're feeling and why. Uh, you know, if everybody is saying, no, you know, that smaller one does the job, and we can get there better, and it's safer, and everybody's happy with it, well, I'm, I'm going to go with that. So, uh, so I'd really like to hear more from your staff on how they're feeling.
Yeah, I think, I think the reason that we wanted to bring it to you is just over some concern that if the end users were disappointed with a different model, that you have some knowledge of that and what the discussion was, et cetera.
Okay. So you guys want me to make a choice? Look at her. I think, you know, personally, I think whatever works for you guys. What do you feel is, is going to be best out there for you guys to do your work? You are required to do the work, and we say we, you take this, and then, you know, this is how we feel, then we might not, you know, might they not be efficient in what you're trying to be doing. So we don't want to set anybody up for failure. I don't, you know. So it's whatever you guys can get together and say, this is our number one choice, and this is our second one. And I think I would be good with that. And the other thing is these buses aren't lifted. They have to be higher, you know, with those springs. Lift them. No, just kidding. But anyway, yeah, I think that's, that would be my take, you know, just something to do your job, right? And, and make, and, and, and meet the, you know, meet, meet, meet what your objective is for that. That, that, that's all that matters to me.
And maybe you should check with your users, you know, the people that are out there and go to the bookmobile. Show them these, you know, bring, show, here's what we're looking. Get their in, you know, input. Do a little survey out there, what they're looking for.
Go ahead, County Manager.
Chair, Chair Gay, members of the board, thank you. We've, we've heard your comments, and we'll take all of those comments into consideration, do a bit more research. I know your fleet manager well, Nate Nellaborski, and I, I know why he's probably not recommending four-wheel drive in the larger unit operation and maintenance long-term. And so we'll look at that as well. And I think as we prepare our budgets for this fiscal year, we do have time set aside. I was just looking for the budget schedule for the library district. So I think we can be prepared to put it all in a context of a budget and make a recommendation to you as you're serving as the library district board of directors, if that's fair.
But certainly, you know, we need, we need one. We're not getting the services out there, and we need to get those back out there. And so just want to thank the staff, county manager, you know, for presenting this to us. And we all agree that it's got to be replaced. We got to get something new for our, our people out there to enjoy the, and it's of course space and all this other stuff is very important. So we leave it up to you. So thank you for the presentation. And, um, go ahead, Erica.
Chair Gay, supervisors. So the day that the library district is coming back for budget presentation is Tuesday, May 13th, and they'll be with us at 10:15. And as a user of a bookmobile, I love this conversation. Grew up using a bookmobile. And when I saw that picture, I could actually smell that bookmobile, like the smell of those books. And I remember that the librarian always made sure there was a Dory the Good Witch book for me every time they came. And it was like once a week, and we, we looked forward to it. So it was a special event at our house as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, for all you do and keeping our kids in mind and others that, you know, are out there reading your books. And thank you so much for that. It's a lot of work being, a lot, doing outreach and being out there, you know, for, for the, for everyone. So thank you so much. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda, we have consideration, possible action, approved resolution 2025-16, delegating authority for approval of transferring of funds between the board of supervisors, community initiative, and operations funds effective FY 2026. County manager?
Thank you, Chair Gay, members of the board. And I believe Clerk Daly is passing out. We've, we've done a bit of work on this. You recall that we've had some conversations about establishing a board of supervisors budget for the future. We've talked about codifying that in essence in a resolution and wanted to, while you have information in your packet, we've done a bit more thinking and, and through our processes and wanted to offer you some alternatives to the language proposed. Erica, do you mind going through that one? And the first one we are on is, there are two items. The first one is six resolution 2025-16.
That's correct. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, members of the board. So you'll see in the revised option, there was a strike through and, and some of these edits on both of these resolutions came from questions that we received. But also, as we took a final look, we had some additional clarification. The clarification language is mostly in Resolution 17. But in Resolution 2025-16, we really tried to, to capture everything. And then we ended up striking through number eight based on questions we received that we really thought were great questions. So happy to walk through that if needed or answer any additional questions about 2025-16.
And Deputy Manager Phil Pot, I think the major change that we're recommending is it stands submitted in the packet. However, we would propose to strike one of the items as it relates to community initiative budget and as it carries over from a supervisor in a, in a fiscal year.
Right. And so there was language in item eight about how it would carry over. And so we're recommending striking that language to keep the carryover process the way it is currently.
So, so keeping the one that's in our packet? Or no, the one, this one?
The revised one with item eight, with the strike through in red.
Okay. So item eight would completely go away?
Yes. So we would retain the current carryover process we have now.
Okay.
So in other words, if there's a new supervisor or appointee, they would continue with the funding that the previous supervisor had rather than start over and lose the previous funding?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Horstman?
I think we talked about, we want to make sure that whatever we put in here, it's for elected and/or appointed supervisors. I think that's really important, and I think that was missing in the other one as well. So, and, and I think it would be inappropriate to, you know, this is not a supervisor's money. We got to understand that. This is the district money, and ultimately it is the county money. So it doesn't seem appropriate to me that, that you would have a, you would negatively affect a district and ultimately the county by limiting community initiative budget carryover, which is, I'm very glad that it's stricken. I would not support it if it wasn't. And otherwise, I think these are things that we've had very extensive conversations with during our budget, our retreats. And I think it's extremely important that we set a base budget allocation for each district. And that from that, we do set aside a certain amount for CI funds that's actually spent for CI funds. I think that was the intent of setting it up in the first place. I also think that the numbers that are being presented are appropriate and are consistent with what most of us as board members have been able to live with within our budget for a long time. And so I like the idea of setting up a maintenance or an operations budget, and I like the idea of having a CI budget, and never the twain shall meet again. In other words, CI is not to be used as a, as a, as a pass-through or carryover to the maintenance and operations. On the other hand, I also think that the maintenance and operation budget that had been allowed to exist time after time did not keep up with the times, nor did it keep up with the reality of the expensive travels. So I think it is important that we upgraded that and yet still stayed, each board, each district still stayed within our existing budget. We just made an allocation to set out what is operations and what is CI. And I also think it was appropriate that we continue to add an additional 5,000 for the operating funds for districts four and five, recognizing that their duty station is outside of flagstaff. So I'm in, I am in support of this resolution as presented. And I know that Siri and others have been working very, very hard during a time when they're also supposed to be working on the budget. And so I want to acknowledge that and recognize the extra work that management and that finance have done to get this together. And with the elimination of aid, I think it's a good resolution. And I'd be willing to make a motion to accept that if there are no other comments.
Supervisor Antiveras?
And, and I don't have a problem with it. I just want to underscore Vice Chair Horstman's comments that there is now a minimum amount set up in here, which is no less than 25,000 of the annual district base budget allocation to remain dedicated to community initiative use. That is very important to me. And so because that is in there, and number eight being stricken or struck, I also can support this resolution.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Supervisor Voskas?
Yeah, I, I support it. I, I thought I had already mentioned that in my comments, but maybe I just asked a question. So I, I am supportive of, of these changes and kind of shoring things up so that we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, my colleagues. And so I do support it also. We do have it outlined in a manner where, you know, it's understood. And, you know, we, we can better work with this, this process and the setup, the way it's been set up for us. So I, so I support it. Okay. And Supervisor Horstman?
Yes. At this point, then, I would make a motion to approve resolution 2025-16, delegating authority for approving of transfer of funds between the Board of Supervisors, Community Initiative, and Operation Funds as fully set forth in the resolution effective for fiscal year 2026, which means it commences on July 1 of 2025.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made by Supervisor Horstman, second by Supervisor Antiveras. All favorably say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have consideration, possible action to approve resolution 2025-17, approving a travel stipend for travel within the state of Arizona for the elected supervisors of Coquettino County be effective beginning July 1, 2025. County manager?
Thank you, Chair Gay, members of the board. And what was in your packet was amended a bit, and here's why. We note the five elected officials, and I'll note that there is a typo where we say each of the five elected officials will say five, but or appointed county supervisors. And, and here's why. If one of you would, it has happened in the past where a supervisor could resign the run for a higher office or, or take a different position or whatever it might be, we're accounting for that appointed position as well. And then also, we wanted to ensure that we counted for the district directors. We know that people in that position and their support of the supervisor also travel. So we wanted to ensure that that was appropriately accounted for as well. Deputy Manager Phil Pot, that I'm. Deputy manager Phil Pot, did I miss anything?
The one other thing that we wanted to do was include the amounts for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and we attached them in exhibit A, and so they would be approved with the approval of this resolution. And there was a lot of thought and trends and documentation that went into the calculation of those travel stipends. So I want to thank our finance director, Siri Malaney, and her staff for their thoughtfulness and their work in coming to those numbers. And so we wanted to include them here as an exhibit.
Thank you. Any questions, comments by the board?
My only comment is that this really encapsulates what we have previously talked about. So it's, this is in writing what my understanding has been, so I can support this.
Okay, is there a motion at this time?
I can so move.
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Supervisor Antovias, second by Supervisor Vazquez, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. Okay, we have lasting on this agenda, I, we have consideration and possible action to appoint a chair and vice chair from among the board of supervisors. So I'll go ahead and give that to board of supervisors.
I know that maybe it hasn't been talked about, but I would like to make a motion that we appoint Patrice Horstman to be chair and supervisor, Supervisor Patrice Horstman to be chair and Supervisor Hiramavazquez to be vice chair. If they would accept that appointment, I have not spoken to Hiramavazquez. But that's my motion. Is it okay to make it in one motion?
I think so.
As your county manager, I can't give you an illegal opinion, but I believe in it.
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's fine. But it might, there might be a proposed amendment. It is on the agenda as one item also. Bill, do you want to sit next to me or? Okay.
Sometimes there can, sometimes there can be competing motions for the selection of your officers. And before you take a second, this would be the opportunity for a supervisor to propose an alternate set of candidates, an alternate slate of candidates. And so if there were an alternate slate of candidates, we should consider unwinding the first motion and allowing the appointments to be made for chair first and vice chair. But if there's no competing alternative, then the motion can stand as proposed and we can seek a second for the motion.
So, thank you, Bill. So there is a motion to nominate or have Patrice Horstman be the chair of the board and second approve Hiramavazquez as vice chair. So there's a motion, there's a second, second by Hiram. Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I would be, I would accept the nomination to be vice chair, and so I want to say that first. And, but we might, if we need to separate him, I'd be okay with it. And if we don't have to separate him, I don't think I can second a motion that I'm being put in there. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, all right, I'm following.
They're gonna say Patrice can second.
Okay, so we will have a motion and we do have a second, all favor say aye.
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 All oppose?
I'm sorry to interrupt. We were hoping you could make it effective a certain date of May second.
Oh, okay.
So, May second, in checking with finance, May second is a date that we could get all of the check, you know, signatures done and it's not on a pay date. So we're hoping that it would be effective on May second. Thank you, Lynn.
Can I just add that into the motion? That I make a motion that we appoint Supervisor Patrice Horstman to be chair, Supervisor Hiramavazquez to be vice chair effective May second, twenty twenty-five.
I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. Congratulations, Patrice Horstman and Hiramavazquez. Thank you so much. Your birthday.
But before, before.
Okay, Supervisor Horstman?
Before we adjourn, I really would like to acknowledge the job that Chair Brigade has done for us. And this has been an especially, I would say, she gave up a lot to be able to do this. She has to travel from a long distance to be here in Flagstaff, where our county seat, where a lot of the business is transacted. And so it meant a lot of travel and a lot of windshield time by her. And also, under her leadership, we tackled some pretty big issues that have been outstanding for a really long time. Number one, she really oversaw and really kicked us in our rear to get us to these retreats. I think they have been exceedingly valuable for us. And we were able, under her leadership, to be able to come with a mission, vision statement, which has been a long time in the making, as well as to address a very difficult thing for all of us as board members, and that is our budget, our board budget, our district budgets, and of course, travel. So these were important matters and I really appreciate you, Supervisor Brigade, for the time you've given, the thoughtfulness you've given, and occasionally hitting us over the head with your gavel. So I really appreciate it very much. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Patrice. Anybody else? Supervisor Vazquez, I know you're probably gonna say, thank you for nomin.
Thank you for the birthday gift, not just kidding. No, I just wanted to reiterate what was just said and say thank you, Chair Brigade, for your service and for tackling these efforts and look forward to working with Supervisor Horstman moving forward after May second. So, thank you.
And I just want to say thank you, Chair Brigade, for your leadership, much appreciated.
Thank you, everyone, I enjoyed myself. I've been aboard on several, lots of nonprofit organization boards. I've seen administration of health, education, infrastructure, housing, and now the county. And in each one of them, I always had to be running the meetings and I enjoyed it. And I just want to thank the staff for making it easier for us, you know, and, you know, rushing to things that we really wanted to attack. And we did a lot within this past year. And mentioned the top three that Patrice had mentioned. There are others that we're doing, even just the way we do our CI dollars and stuff like that. That's been put to rest also. And so there's a lot of things and it's good, you know, it's good for our changes are good, you know, for the better. And I greatly appreciate all the staff, you know, that have been there for us and working with us and my colleagues. So it's not my birthday, but so I guess that's why I'm not gonna be the board chair anymore. Thank you so much. Keep that, that, alright. So we are gonna be adjourning. It's now three with fifty-four PM. Sure.